That it doesn't say five hundred paper, you know staples or whatever, but.
Based on last year, we supply a lot more.
What is Dennis? So I don't think the towns went up ten thousand dollars in one year.
No, and that's fine. That's fine, but I think, I think they've made a generalization through the entire budget. That's not true.
No, no, they were only arguing that line of the six tens. They were not, they were, they were not discussing all six tens. They were discussing that specific six ten budget, and they were not making any other observations across the six ten budgets other than that one and any other ones as they got to that they seemed to see increases on.
When you look at the six ten, and it's probably the same description year to year, a significant increase. Now, the one thing that we didn't point out is that the high school is going to go up by about thirty kids next year. Because we have a graduating class of one hundred and three and about one hundred and thirty-eight in grade eight this year. So you're probably looking about one hundred and thirty-two-ish coming in as freshmen. So we use the rolled up numbers, which means we've got probably thirty-two times that fee would account for some of that, but not all.
And then we were informed by the town that we were, our water, our water use projection increase of two percent is off by a minimum, the, the town expects from the water company a seven to fourteen percent increase on water costs.
Penachuk is projecting.
So when we only budgeted two percent, we're either off five percent or twelve percent.
I'd look for the budget committee to add that. It's an expected expense.
Well, well, they were the ones that informed us of it because we didn't know about it until Bill said something.
I would expect a member of that committee to say this is a real cost.
Actually, I think, I think Bill was willing to do that.
Well, what, what, what is the reason for that kind of an increase?
Because that's what the PUC is going to give them.
That's what Penachuk thinks. They can get approval on.
They can go in and ask for whatever they want, and then the Public Utilities Commission sets what that increase can be.
Then, yes.
Cooper, as a talented social studies teacher, could give us a lecture on the evils of a monopoly.
And then.
Can't we catch rainwater?
Whether you're a capitalist or not.
And then the other.
Plenty of water GMS.
Topic of conversation, are you going to address that now? The transportation, because we deleted.
Yeah, we could do that. We are at the end of the contract with First Student, and the contract has a clause that allows us within the last six months of the, of the contract to approach them about a one-year or a two-year extension. We're anticipating with the price of gas kind of stabilizing and slid down a little bit, two and a half percent increase range. And we wanted to get down and get some firm numbers. They basically backpedaled on it. Nashua, First Student has a major facility in Nashua that houses the buses for Nashua, Hudson, and Litchfield. Nashua and Litchfield contracts are up this year. Hudson has one or two more years on their contract with First Student. Hudson gets a good deal because they're lumped with Nashua. We get a good deal because we're lumped with Hudson and Nashua. And so the economy of scale does really work in this case, and we're sort of an add-on, and we get, because there's, there's efficiencies for them across the three systems with CTE, and they can, you know, there's some districts that may need an extra run in the morning and another in the afternoon, they can offer a good price. For the first time in twelve years, Nashua is going out to bid. And the bids don't close until January first. They don't know what's going to happen. So if they did quote us, they could not give us a figure until after they find out whether or not they're the successful bidder in Nashua. If they're not the successful, well, if they, if we required a number from them, the price increase would be in the twenty to twenty-five percent range. Because they're assuming that they're running only in Litchfield. So Frank had a conversation about, well, you know, if you lose Nashua, then you'll need someplace to park your buses, if we this, if we that. And they said, yes, we'll work with you. But the takeaway really was if we're going to go to, to either extend it, if First Student gets a contract, then we can have a conversation after the contract is tendered about extending it. But even then, the increase is probably going to be close to the, to the ten percent range. If First Student doesn't get it, we will probably be better off to try and work the same deal with the new vendor than we will to try to run a standalone piece with First Student. So it's going to take us a while to, to wrap this up. We do believe, high school ridership is actually quite low on the buses. There are some efficiencies there that, that could save some money. But Frank and I will continue to work with the folks in Nashua, and we'll know what their timelines are. But the question becomes what do we budget at this point in time? And Frank, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, is indicating that a minimum of a ten percent increase should probably be in there compared to the, I think, two and a half percent is what we advised.
Is there a feel for which way Nashua is leaning at this point, or?
The biggest fear, I think, is that somebody's going to undercut First Student by a small amount of money. First Student, actually, the reason that they haven't gone up to tender for twelve years is the price increases have been pretty, pretty moderate, and the service has been, in their estimation, very good. So the fear is somebody comes in and undercuts, gets the bid, and then the price starts to, to roll up. So, and then the other thing becomes, as a relatively small player in this, I think we've gotten more than a fair deal out of First Student. So the real cost increases before we took any reduction for reducing high school runs might be closer to twenty percent. So we'll have to broach that with the budget committee at the next meeting.
Can we look at what other towns do? Like, what does Londonderry use? What does Manchester use?
I don't know what you Londonderry uses. They're also a lot bigger, so they can command a.
If we can piggyback off Hudson, we could probably take a backup Londonderry.
We do know from Nashua that they are anticipating bids from two other national companies besides First Student. But they are big companies, which means that if they get Nashua, it's highly likely that they will be interested in, well, Hudson's locked in with First Student, unfortunately for First Student, because that economy of scale will now be gone. But we should be able to talk to them about, and Frank has contact information and is going to be in touch with both companies to let them know that if they are the successful bidder, we'll be wanting to engage them in some conversation. So the question then becomes, what number do we recommend to the budget committee as, as a placeholder? Knowing that if we make, if we make an actual contract, we know it's a bad deal compared to what we're going to. So what do we project in the budget? Because we won't know what it's going to cost us until after the delivery.
I think always, always after deliberative? So we couldn't even adjust to that deliberative?
Good question.
Yeah, that would be a great way to change that.
I believe that, I believe they're expecting end of January to be.
It'll be close.
Yeah, it'll be close one way or the other. We'll, we'll keep in touch with them.
Maybe we'll have an understanding where they're leaning at that point.
Yeah.
No.
Transportation excluding the co-curricular stuff's about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars this, in this year's budget, so.
Ten percent's forty thousand dollars.
Almost fifty.
Yeah, a fifteen percent increase would be.
So if you go twenty-five, you're almost, you're over a hundred.
A single bus is, is about a forty thousand dollar expenditure.
Dennis, did that include, um, special services too? No, so.
It's regular transportation.
So, I mean.
I think special service is another like three hundred thousand.
Ridership, the, the high school, we do see the number of high school buses because there is very low ridership. Could save a chunk of that, and then the question becomes how much? Or as some people would say, you're not required to bus high school students anyway.
You are not.
Correct.
I'm not going to go there.
The, if you factor in all the co-curricular and athletics, it's five sixty for regular transportation.
So, you know, twenty-five percent of that, or even twenty percent of that is, is, you know, a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Frank should be back tomorrow, and we'll sit down and try to figure out, you know, what percentage do we look like if we need to, that we can, you know.
So we need to be, we're going, we're going, we didn't inform the budget committee. We just told them that we had a couple of issues. I think the other one will be discussed in non-public, but, but we do have this issue, another issue that could impact our budget since we've given it to them, and that we would hope to have some information for them about that tomorrow.
I would actually be more comfortable adding the money and then reducing it at deliberative than.
Yeah, than adding at deliberative.
Than trying to add.
Yes.
You have no problem removing money at deliberative.
You could have a real, especially when you're going to throw a big number out. If it, if it comes in and it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and people just say no, then, you know, you've dug yourself a hole.
It's going to have an impact on, on major.
It's much better to come up and say, we got a much better number, and it's X less than what we thought it was going to be.
So we'll, we'll sort of try to get a little bit of guidance from the budget committee, but I would imagine that next week, you know, we'll need a number to take back. Either after this meeting, that we will be informing the budget committee that we'll be adding on to the budget lines X amount, or a week from Thursday, because we meet next Wednesday, that we would have new numbers that will have a bottom line that we'll add across all the transportation lines, and it'll be X amount of dollars.
That'd be a good way to do it.
But we need, we, we need to come to some sort of agreement of how to process on that, on the water, since we know about it.
There's a big impact on the default budget with that, too.
Yeah.
If we don't have a contract, the default budget will carry whatever the contracted value is.
That wouldn't adjust.
Or the last year that rolls over.
Yeah, because it's a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Versus if we had, if we signed a new deal in January, which we've done in the past, you can incorporate that new contracted number into your default budget. There could be a hundred thousand dollar hole in the default budget if we don't know, have any information by then. Merry Christmas, everybody. John, you're a ray of sunshine tonight.
I think, anything else, Brian, that, that we talked about last night?
Well, you brought up, when you're talking about, like lacrosse expenses from lacrosse, that when the budget is voted on, it's voted on with those totals in there?
Correct. On the, yes.
At the bottom line, yeah.
On the bottom line.
I think what happened was, remember when we did the school board budget? There were, the, the self-funded athletics were in there, and we backed them out manually. And it went forward having not had them pulled out. So they saw the same budget that you folks did, and so we ended up doing the same thing. I got my calculator out and subtracted the numbers, and they, you know. But it, it should have been either, I think it needs to be either by itself or all in both ways, starting right from the scratch, so.
Have a separate budget altogether for it. Anything else on the budget committee?
I think that's enough for one night.
They only had half-day members there, so they can imagine that.
Yeah, really.
I think the only other committee I met was, the negotiation team met last week. As the board knows, and Elliot probably knows, we're already in pass right now, and we're meeting with a mediator next Monday, I believe. So hopefully, hopefully that will help push the sides close together so we can get an agreement and move forward towards the election day, get a contract sold to the voters.
I question all that, since that's a daytime, and you two can't be there. I think Brian had said something yesterday that he might be able to be there for. Do we want to have a school board representative there?
I think I can be there.
Oh, you can, okay.
For part, part of the day, anyway. I think it'd be from the beginning till probably one or two.
I can be there later in the afternoon.
So maybe they'd be overlapped, then.
And we agreed we'd be available by phone should there be a question.
I can be available till like eleven fifteen. I'm not sure what time it's starting, so.
I can't be available.
Okay, so we'll get someone there then, at least. Cool.
Don't take hours.
Hopefully it was hammered out, hammered out in an hour, and we can all go home.
I said I'm available in the morning, so.
Okay, cool. We have some recognitions to hand out. We have three students who were recognized for the National Merit Scholar Commended Student Award for two thousand thirteen. I believe what that means is that they scored in the top five percent for all students taking the PSAT. Is that accurate?
They're finalists.
They're finalists, okay. But to be recommended, I think they had to score in that top percentile, correct?
Yes.
Cool. We have Aaron Bono. Leah Stagnone.
I don't want to watch the amazing boards, I don't think.
And Adorian Fekiti.
Did I give the right person the right one?
Yeah, Aaron. Congratulations. Adorian? Actually, I'll be waiting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Adorian. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, Leah, wait, what was your writing score?
On the regular S and T, about an eight hundred.
Out of how much?
What's that?
Out of.
Out of eight hundred.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Even I can do the math on.
Congratulations all.
Yeah, congratulations. And now we have the curriculum report.
Derek, do you maybe want to move the students?
I was going to say, should we flip them to the front? Because I don't think, they probably don't want to stay through all this, yeah.
After that scintillating budget discussion.
Okay, well, move the students to, to before the principals and Dr. Hian. Sorry, guys. We have Leah Stagnone and Ryan Corini.
Parry.
Parry.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Yes, so, I'll go first. So a couple of weeks ago, before Thanksgiving break, we had our, the student council ran our annual Make a Difference Week, and we had our best turnout for donations ever, with over three thousand items donated to the Litchfield Food Pantry. And Campbell contributed one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six of those. We had a huge outpouring of just participation on the last day, with some advisories bringing in hundreds of items, which was, that was really awesome. Astron, this is astronomy week at Campbell, and tonight was astronomy night. That still, that did go on tonight, right?
Yes.
We did have sports awards a couple of weeks ago in November for fall sports. Key Club is doing a toy drive right now, so they're collecting toys for the holiday season. And also, the National Honor Society is having a clothing drive, a winter clothing drive right now, that started this week. And it was supposed to go to December twentieth, but we're extending it another week.
All right, so. I'm Ryan, everyone. Nice to meet you all. So some of the things that has happened recently was, one of our students, a sophomore here, Alison Herbocheck, gave a very moving presentation about anti-bullying. She gave her own story. She gave stories of other victims, and it was a very moving story. It was a thing that started with just freshmen and sophomores saw the presentation, and then it was decided at school that we were going to give this to the juniors and seniors, and now I believe it's going to the other schools. So it was a very great presentation. It was very moving for everyone. We all got these wristbands after that told us to be brave and stop bullying. So that was just all around a great presentation. It was a great way for everyone in this school, at least, to get together and learn the cause.
Now, did she give the presentation to the, the whole, the two grades all at once, or is it by class?
Yep, yep. She threw freshman, sophomore first, and then the week later to the juniors and seniors all together.
It was part of her sophomore project, so she had a vision that she wanted to talk about bullying and bullying in high schools across America, and then share her own story. And she asked to do just the freshmen and sophomores, but they had such a, you know, they gave her a standing ovation. They, and then the juniors and seniors came and said, we want to see this presentation. And I think it really brought our school closer, and I think people really understood that bystanders have a responsibility to speak out, and it's really important for kids to have the skills to, to, to be able to say no to bullying and, and to protect each other. So I, I thought it was a really outstanding presentation.
Yeah, exactly. That was, that was a very important detail, was that members of the juniors and senior class were coming to us saying, we want to see this presentation. We want to know what's going on. So it was very great to see, especially people in the school who don't really usually get a say in what happens in school. They got to represent themselves and say, we want this for us, too. We want it to benefit all of us. Yep, so that was a great thing to happen. Also, the student council went on their trip to Waterville Valley Conference. It's a statewide meeting where, basically a workshop where we all get to, multiple workshops where we learn different leadership styles. We found out what kind of leader we are, how to work well with each other. So that was a great way for us as a student council to learn better leadership qualities and how we can benefit the school in better ways. Some events coming up. We have our volleyball coming up next Saturday, so we are very proud of that.
What's coming up?
Volleyball.
Oh, okay.
Wintleson.
It's a dance.
Winter dance.
Somehow I'm picturing them playing ball in the hallways, which just didn't seem like it would be a good thing, but.
It's a big dance.
Yeah, yep. It's been very successful in the past. We usually have Chinese food before. We're working out details for that. There's a lot playing going on this week and next week, so we're very excited for this. And then personally, my favorite event that goes on in school is the tree landing ceremony coming up soon, where we have the, we set up the tree in the auditorium. We have all the students in each grade come into the auditorium, and we give a special, you can buy stars for, to, what should I say, to.
For memory?
Yeah, yeah, memories.
Memory or honor people.
Right. So it's, it's a great thing. All the stools together. We light the tree together. And it's a great thing for all the students in the school to come together, and then we all sing songs after, and it's.
Sing-alongs, chorus and band perform.
Where's the money go after, when you buy the stars?
Scholarship.
Yeah, scholarship for work, right? Yep, so as far as academics go, for us, both me and Leah are involved in a lot of AP classes this year. So I'm very proud to take on these challenges. I'm in AP US History, AP English, and AP Calc this year. A lot of rigorous challenges, but I'm very proud that these are preparing me. I definitely feel challenged this year, and I definitely feel prepared for what I do next year.
Should I talk about that, too?
Sure.
I'm in AP English, AP US History, AP Biology, and AP Spanish. And it's, it's definitely a very heavy course load, but it's very challenging. Our teachers are great, that we have, it's making it a good senior year.
Excellent. Do you guys know what we're going to do next year yet? Have you started thinking about it?
We've applied to colleges, haven't gotten those letters back yet, but.
It's early.
Yeah, I'm actually looking to go for high school education.
I'd like to do international relations with a minor in political science.
Interesting.
And, you know, Leah also, congratulations to her because she's a finalist for the US Senate Youth Program for the state of New Hampshire. She interviewed last week. She had a huge interview up at the state, and she would be one of two students from the state of New Hampshire to go to Washington DC and win a five thousand dollar scholarship. And she's got a very good chance, and we should know any day.
Waiting for that letter. Every day checking the mailbox.
I keep checking my mailbox, too. I don't know why. So we heard good things. We heard good reports, so we're just waiting.
So what did you two do to get here?
Um, to get here?
Did you volunteer? Did you get elected?
You were elected.
Yeah, we were elected.
You lost a bet?
Short straw.
You're short straw.
Were you willingly elected, or was it just?
Yeah, we were willingly elected.
So you actually had to run. You weren't both just write-ins that got three votes each?
No, no, we, we gave a speech over the announcements, and it was a student body election, so.
How many people ran?
Two gentlemen ran.
I wasn't opposed. It's not really saying much, but.
You had a resounding victory.
I'm still happy to.
We do have that word.
It's not saying much about us. That's what it's not saying much about.
You start your political career, you won your first race unopposed.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good way to win, isn't it, John?
It is. It very is.
They both won unopposed last year, so.
Hey, we ran against each other.
Just happened to be two spots over.
Brian had more votes, though.
He did. He did. I was an incumbent. I, you know, it's bad, you know how they hate incumbents.
I know how that works.
Excellent. Any more questions for the students?
No. Great job.
You're more than welcome to go. You can stay and listen to the rest of the exciting stuff.
I think we were planning on staying.
Excellent. Sounds good.
So, Tom, I just want to note that, I think that's two or three years in a row that Campbell won.
I know.
I know Scott's new, and he wasn't as competitive, or doesn't seem as competitive as Bo.
How many ramen noodles were there? Ten for a dollar? I mean, you know, that's fine. That's fine. We'll be back.
I got the impassioned text message at four twenty on Thursday that I needed to go to Sam's. The one was in my cart, and I said, make sure you open it, because they each counted one.
They heard the footsteps of the Raiders.
Opened the box around.
Thirty-six in a box.
That's how you get there. You know, but, but, you know, that was a great effort. But just, just so you know, the scouts, a couple of weeks before, had collected almost fifty-three hundred items for the pantry. And that was the scout, the Litchfield scouting, Boy Scouts here. So they, I think that's great, because I know that we're at it being on Monday, and the pantry is very full. They, they thank everybody. They said it'll be empty on December twenty-fifth, so if you're looking for January, they'll be looking for supplies again, so.
We should just have an ongoing donation.
And I think they're starting to challenge you for dance attendance, too.
Really?
It used to be way down, but the last couple, I think, have been fairly well attended.
When I first came here, we used to cancel them, and now they're packed.
They're driving around the whole school, Tom.
Yeah, we were four hundred, I think, our first, first dance. It was, it was well-attended, but, um. It was so much fun at the middle school.
Campbell only has four hundred kids.
Three fifty. Yeah, they were almost all there. We were counting kids that weren't there. I think we have twice that at the Halloween bash. I just have to throw that out. Yeah, it's, it's really big, so. Four and it's one.
Excellent. Curriculum report.
Ah ha. Well, I've been busy, as I, I've been away from you all for a while.
So it says, it's been like three months.
Thought you'd forget about me. I'll just mention a few things because we have a packed agenda for perk recommendations. I just want to note on the first bullet, the ICT committee's work, and, and make sure that people understand that that's a part of our accountability, school accountability, that to date, we have not been able to meet. And we feel comfortable that with this initiative this year, that we'll be able to return to school accountability in the affirmative, that we do have a process in place. We do need to enrich it over the next few years, but that we will have students who will be placing items in their digital portfolio in five through eight, which is a major piece. We also, we also have some pilots at the elementary, and then in the ICT courses at the high school. So that's a major step in that direction, and I appreciate the ICT teachers who participated over the summer, and we also met in August. Any questions about that? Okay. Any questions about the items other than perk? They're pretty straightforward. We are trying to vet the pilot materials very carefully. On the eleventh, I have the, not only a representative, but the trainer from McGraw-Hill, who's coming in to do additional training for grades six through eight, and also the high school materials to answer questions the teachers have. Point out any additional materials. It's really been a relatively short period of time for the teachers to become so familiar with both the text-type materials, whether they're digital or hard copy, and also all of the online resources, which are very, very extensive. In the case of the middle school, since we started this pilot, one other company has come out with materials, and I'm meeting with that representative in the next few days. The high school people just attended an NCTM event and were to be looking to see if they've collected any materials, and I need to meet with them and find out what they've discovered. But in each of the cases, we did a round of evaluations last month, and the response, although no materials are perfect. There are pros and semi-cons, I'll say. Nobody disliked them totally or felt that they were unsatisfactory. Little pieces here and there they wish were different. Other parts they feel are excellent. So what we'll have to do is weigh them against what else is available. But in all cases, what they responded to was that there are more appropriate problems in the materials for the, for the students, that the materials provide a better resource. I don't know if you recall with your own children or your own experiences, but some of these math materials have. That the materials provide a better resource. I don't know if you recall with your own children or your own experiences, but some of these math materials have very poor explanations. They don't have very good examples, so that when students go home, I see the students shaking their heads, they go home and they need to be reminded. They have their notes, but they also need more examples, that these materials have much better examples, much better narrative and problems. And one of the things we wanna keep in mind is that although our teachers are always looking to supplement the kinds of problems in math, both the calculation, straight calculations and word problems with other resources, the time that they spend doing that can be enormous. And that time can be taken away from creating other, better lessons, more analysis when they're grading, the student assessments. Although these materials have extensive formative assessments, those still need to be tweaked based on how their own students are doing, 'cause that's the whole point of formative assessment, is to inform instruction. So we would rather be having our teachers doing those kinds of student-centered, that kind of work for students, rather than out there constantly hunting for problems. Whereas if your instructional materials at least have a strong core, then they could still supplement, but it doesn't take that enormous amount of time. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at. And when both of those groups, departments feel confident in their recommendations, they will go to perk and then I'll bring them to you.
The ICT stuff?
Yes.
I mean, you met in October, so it was probably a little early, but will any of this apply to what we're hoping will be a computer program at GMS?
We do have to have a one through four component.
Okay.
And right now, we have one teacher who will be having her students put things in their digital portfolios. We hope to expand that. Our difficulty is we don't really have communication between the other teams right now. We don't. I mean, you know that in the budget, there's a recommendation for a halftime technology integration specialist. This is one piece that that position could certainly help with. Because it really, even though we have a draft, as I provided you, of a, of a portfolio rubric, it really means training and assisting the teachers, some of whom are not familiar with some of the applications that are required and how to manage the whole thing with younger children. Not just creating the pieces, but then the requirement is that there's a reflection and a feedback piece before the pieces are selected to go into the portfolio. Because the pieces that are selected are supposed to be representative of that student's best work. So there's a really, a lot to it, especially for younger students.
So it'll probably be the same matrix, but just different goals.
Correct. The matrix is the same because it identifies the requirement in each of those categories. Right.
Also, on the, you mentioned math, professional development. Is that with Dr. Sharma again, or?
It isn't. This is from the, as I mentioned, the trainer from McGraw-Hill in both cases. Pearson has bought, you probably know, but Pearson has brought out almost every publisher out there. So the, the division of the math that we're piloting at the middle school is called Glencoe Math, because they bought out Glencoe and they just continue to use that name. But, and then the high school versions are under the label of McGraw-Hill. But, so it's, it's that, those trainers. We decided, at this point anyway, we had a lot of other initiatives that we were looking at. And we really felt that although we could have used another year of Mahesh Sharma helping us monitor our efforts, that we would rely on our administrative expertise to do that and use our resources elsewhere.
So just real quickly, through the other program, the other curriculum and stuff that you've evaluated, you're bringing into, you know, I don't want this to be a Common Core discussion, but there's many discussions on both sides of the, of the Common Core.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and, and in fact, Manchester decided to create Manchester Common Core, but they're not gonna call it Common Core, whatever their initiative is.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'd like to know whether or not our curriculum is being elevated above the Common Core standards. And, and that is, you know, you know, we're, yes, we've adapted to the process of the Common Core and the fact that our, our students may be tested based on whatever that process is, but that our curriculum is continuing to evolve and improve above and beyond what the standards are, what they're looking for. Is that a?
In the Common Core?
In our curriculum for our schools is going, is reaching further, more rigorous, reaching more further, not yet.
Not yet, because we haven't attained the standard of the Common Core. So as I mentioned before, are, my philosophy, my approach to this, and, and the staff has endorsed that, that I've worked with on the committees, is that we needed to take this in stages. And moving toward, toward the standards of the Common Core will be at least this step. In the unpacking of it, you'll notice that I named the document, "The Math Curriculum Framework." Because what we did was, we took the Common Core standards. We unpacked them using a variety of resources that made recommendations. We went through them. We vetted it through all the teachers in the building that were interested in participating in that process and analyzing it. In many, most cases, I think it's fair to say, they responded that the, the expectations were more rigorous than what they'd been asking their students to do before and what the New Hampshire GLEs, which were actually too vague. And so what ended up happening is people were really forced to interpret them at their own grade level and within their own classrooms, rather than having a firmer, clearer understanding of what the expectation is. I'll borrow some words from Mahesh Sharma, which is, "There has to be a common understanding of knowing." That is, what knowledge and skills students are expected to know and be able to do. And that's what we've attempted to do in these frameworks. Are they perfect? No. We had, you know, eight hours for maybe ten meetings over the course of two years. If we had a team dedicated to writing this day after day, we may be able to do what Manchester is doing. We don't have the resources, at least currently, to do that. Even if I did nothing else, I couldn't do that. And so, and, and, you know, the math is more rigorous? Sure. Within this, do we want to move toward every student being ready for two years of algebra, one in seventh and eighth grade, for instance? That would be great. Our stu-, a lot of our students are not ready to do that. And so we had to write the framework in a way that elevates our expectations that were reasonable and it will take us some time to go through that transition, depending on the upper grades, because that will take longer for those students. Then we have to do a program evaluation, which should be ongoing, which is what perk is revitalizing and attempting to do, and say, "At what point are we ready to perhaps elevate to another level?" I'll just say this about some of the material that's been shared with you. There are states like Massachusetts who have already in place, prior to Common Core and Smarter Balance, in place very high standards, resulting in high stakes assessment, meaning students have to pass their tests to graduate. We don't have that in New Hampshire. Therefore, there isn't the motivation for some of our students and some of our families to comply with the expectations. So does that mean we shouldn't have them? No. But it means that we need to be realistic as a public institution and assess what is reasonable within our community and what are reasonable expectations in every given time. Does that help?
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay. And, and I hope that can be an ongoing discussion. It certainly is in perk. One of the things we did last month, we had an extended discussion about what constitutes text complexity and how some of these regulations that you're getting are vetted with regard to not only the curriculum evaluation documents that I forwarded to you, but also that text complexity rubric that includes the quantitative piece about the lexile band and then the quality of the piece, the challenge of the piece, and then the third dimension of how appropriate it is for the targeted reader and the tasks that we want to accomplish. Meaning analysis or character or theme, whatever the, the purpose, the curricular purpose is for that piece.
There also seems to be enough discussion within the group to try and keep those levels high, if that gives you any comfort, John.
No, it does.
We actually did have that conversation on a particular book that they were looking to have and, you know, just reading through it, I myself just flicked through the pages a little bit here and there and said, "This doesn't seem to be enough rigor in this reading material." So we're evaluating why, you know, there may be another reason why this teacher wants this book, but.
Right.
Hoping to get something a little more rigorous and achieve the same thing.
And we aren't rushing to decisions. We may even decide in favor of something, but I'm reading that book to satisfy myself. People are reading other things and they, yep, they have enough, the teachers all created.
Another thing on your schedule.
Yes, I know. Nighttime. The teachers all created last year selected tech, drafts of selected text lists, both from their anthologies, if they had them, and from supplemental materials. And so they have plenty of text to work with in the interim. These would be either to replace some other text or extend what they're doing.
That seems to be a good group that's looking critically at things and hopefully we get a good result.
Yeah. We have, certainly have lively discussions.
Yes, we do.
Which is good.
It all helps.
So my first perk item is to amend the curriculum resource tool. The document, and I found the original in, in past archives that I was given, that was adopted in 2010, even though it wasn't dated on the document, but. And in our work on the committee, people ask certain questions, are asked, "Why was something rated this way or that way?" So we actually revised the document and that's what you have. If you are prepared at this time to accept that, approve it, that would be helpful. If you need to wait, I understand that.
Do you know what the change, the differences are?
Yes, they're primarily in the scale that I chose to use. The wording was much more helpful. And at the end, we added questions that said, "Why this?" or "Why not this?" Because even though things were rated, it was good to have a narrative explanation. And we also added a question about the funding. I initially really didn't feel like perk should make decisions based on funding, because it seemed like our mission was to make decisions based on the quality of the material and, but we felt, and, and we may still do that, but it's on there for informational purposes. So that if you have two equally valuable resources and we already own one or half a set or whatever, it would be less expensive, then that might be a consideration when it came here. So the, but the cad, the criteria are basically the same.
It looks like there's questions added, though.
Yeah, at the end.
Okay, all those new, those are all new questions, right?
Yep.
Now, is this, is this, and I tell you, this is for the committee and for administration, but is something similar to this given to high school students or middle school students as they progress through a certain class to see what their opinions are of the material or whatever? I mean, there are ones that would be, you know.
Well, this is only for new material.
No, I, I understand that, but.
But for the current materials?
Is there something that can be modified even, you know, less?
Follow-up with, with the, the goals.
You know, something that the students could, you know, in an AP, they go, you know, "We found this AP book to be not as rigorous as something we had somewhere else." Or something, because we really don't know. And the only people that can really tell us is, is, are the students. I mean, they, you know, maybe.
At least from a user-friendly.
A user-friendly process or whether, or how they felt about it. So, you know, that could be something that could be incorporated. I don't know if you so much need it at, at GMS, but I think it would be something that at LMS and, and definitely the high school
Yep.
Could get, help guide the process of, because they may come back and say that, you know, we, I don't know if they'd tell us the book was too easy, but maybe they would. But, but it would help us begin to get a feel on, on some of those.
Right, especially in the replacement process.
Uh-huh.
Yep, we can do that.
Did the perk committee already go over the revised version?
We did. Did you have the writing, writing in there then? Yes, yes.
It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay.
In fact, we actually issued it for one, one of the recommendations. Actually used the revised form so we could test it out, kind of, and it, it did seem more helpful in terms of the criteria that we were using and answering the questions.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Well, so there's ten items in the board's policy, IJL. Materials are to be considered on the basis of, and there's ten items. So there's sixteen questions that we're asking. Why aren't we just asking the ten that are in the policy?
Well, they were all there before and somehow I made.
I think I asked this question before as well.
And I made the assumption that.
To a predecessor.
You would like those. I can, we can certainly go back and.
I mean, because there's, there's ten criteria and maybe the sixteen map into the ten. But it seems like we're asking some things that aren't there. Or asking the same thing more ways than one.
We can go back and look at it. I will tell you that we found, well, I'll speak for myself, 'cause I didn't ask that question that way. But nobody on the committee said, "We don't need that question," and each time we've gotten one of these, and we probably have ten this year already. Some, the ones that were not applicable one time now are. That was a new category, because sometimes people said, you know, "This doesn't apply." So knowing the range of materials, we're dealing with textbooks, supplemental material, videos for next month, we have a video. So the different types of material kind of require different kinds of questions. We certainly can go back and look at it, and even if you approved it tonight, we can look at it and bring it back again. So I guess what I would like is some kind of confirmation that we can continue to use this version, even if it's in draft form, because it's more helpful. It's providing us better information. And we can also go back and take a look at those ten items.
I would think that the school board policy requires that we consider these ten items, but if the perk committee wants to consider a wider range, like you look at it more rigorously, I don't think it's a problem.
Well, so price isn't listed here anywhere and that's one of our criteria.
Okay.
The appropriateness of the author, or the, the reputation of the author is one of the criteria that I don't see that's represented. The repri-, the repri-, of the publisher is in there, which is also called out by the board policy. So I'm just saying, I think some things might be overrepresented. This is just my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And some things are not represented.
Okay.
And, and if that's the right set of questions, then we either have to change the policy to reflect the right set of questions or make sure that the questions reflect the policy that the board wants to be in place.
Well, why don't we take it back and take a look?
And if the, if while they're doing that, if they wanna take a look at the policy and request the school board to go through the process of making a change in the policy, because these are the best processes today. I don't know when that policy was.
Two thousand nine.
Approved, so it's five years old. So it, it may need a, an update to be more relevant to what we're having today.
I just wanna see the things aligned, whichever way it goes. I re, it doesn't matter, but we should, we should be using a procedure that's in line with the policy.
Well, and you, you might have to have two or three questions that address one aspect of the policy, but I can't tell you right now what they are. So if you want that delineated, we'll go back and take a look.
Well, that would be a, a minimum of what they have to cover, we have to cover in the policy.
The policy, yeah.
And we have to cover other things.
I wouldn't want us base the selection on a criteria that's not in the board policy. 'Cause somebody would say, "Well, how, okay, that, that's the one that put it over, because it was a five, everything else was a three," or whatever the circumstances are.
Well, I will tell you then, that this could get rather extensive. A very well-done evaluation tool would be, you'd have to have tools for each kind of resource. Because if the tool has any kind of graphics, pictures, you would wanna evaluate those based on white space, color, whether, readability. So, and those things we do internally that are encompassed in some of those criteria. But if you really wanna get down to the detail and the nitty-gritty, then what we'd have to do is develop a series of them, depending on the type of resource. And I understand what you're saying about policy. Remember that we also need this to be user-friendly for the faculty, because it's time-consuming. And we can say, "Yes, they're supposed to do that." And we can say, yes, they're supposed to do that and all that. But we're, this is to benefit kids, to choose resources that are the best for kids. So, I would want to strike a balance between meeting the needs of our policy or revisions and something that's relatively user-friendly for our staff. So, I will do as your pleasure indicates.
I am but one member, so.
I would, I would agree. I mean, I, I think there ought to be room for flexibility. I don't think price should drive anything.
You should be really careful, John. You're talking about flexibility with policy.
I hear you.
So, the next person that walks in and says, well, remember on the curriculum, you wanted to be flexible? I want to be flexible here.
I, I understand that. And I'm just saying that they should, they should, they should mirror each other, you know. But at the same time, like, like every policy we have, they're not, they're not edged in stone. And, you know, we take everyone up and analyze it.
I don't care which way it goes. I just want to see them aligned. I don't want to be using something that's out of alignment with the policy or I don't want the policy to be out of alignment of which is, this is, I mean, kind of how I view it is that's really the, becomes the new procedure that supersedes what's in the policy.
And it does say, it does say right here, this evaluation tool is aligned to score but, school board policy. So, I guess we should. But it does have a price thing in here.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but I mean, but if you guys go back and determine that that's not as important in the evaluation, then you request that be removed from the policy. You come back and say, just because the policy says price doesn't necessarily mean it has to be there when you come back. You could, you could come back with ten different items listed in there now.
Right, but what, what we have here is what is the immediate and long-term cost of adopting this resource? It's not saying, should we spend the most? It's not giving...
Right.
It's just saying, what is it?
And I don't, but I don't think the policy...
And I think that that's always going to be a factor in that decision. You can't separate that because, as Julie was saying, we might have something that's equally as well here already, so...
I don't have it pulled, but price isn't defined. It just says price. So, that question to me would be an adequate question to cover, price.
Yes, just so you know.
It was, it, to me, that's, even though it's an adequate question.
Or at least Dennis will, I'm sure. Right?
I'm sure you would as well, if you haven't already.
I'm already on the committee, so I do it there.
I'm sure you've already asked. Well, but, so, the two that are there tonight, the Tale of Two Cities, looks like it's the new one and it doesn't have the price piece.
That's not the new one. There was an interim one. It seemed like every time we met, we came up with a, you know, another question or so. So, we added...
I mean, the Diary of Anne Frank, the forms themselves look identical other than one was filled out by hand and one was filled out electronically. I'm assuming it's a Word doc at some point.
Right. Neither one of them asked the price. It was then that we got that thought to add that. And the ones that are, for instance, going to the committee next week asked people about pricing.
I know it always comes up in my thought process.
I guess I would recommend that they continue off what they have and they like to use. But look at the policy, look what we have and come back with, you know, a recommendation or whatever. Would you guys agree? Or...
Works for me.
I think there has to be a timeline, otherwise...
We'll go on forever, yeah. How many...
It will fall off simply because other things get added.
Are you guys meeting in December?
No. Oh, yeah, it probably will be sooner than that.
Well, does this, does this need to be...
Agenda for this month is pretty full, but...
Truly, does this need to be, can, can this not be fine-tuned by just the administration at this point in time to try to get the two in align?
Well, I usually bring a draft to the committee, so I can do that for their January meeting.
I think if they use it now, I'm, I was thinking actually more of the board's agenda between now and the end of February. It's going to be pretty busy. That's why I was suggesting March.
Well, we, but they're going to want to be evaluating some things.
Yeah, well, they can use it in this format in the interim and then come back with an alignment suggestion or solution sometime in March.
Because you'll meet December, you meet January as well?
Then we give them enough time to...
Yes, we meet every month.
So, by then, it'll be probably end of January, February for us. We'll be in full budget season, obviously. But it'll be pretty quick. Are you, you'll be here in February anyway for a curriculum update, I'm assuming, right?
First, going to try to go with the first meeting of the month.
February, so we can probably do then, at least get an update at that point. Fair?
Deliberate, it's February fifth.
That's right.
That's our meeting, that week, so.
So, you might not be here in February.
Oh, okay, vacation.
Whenever the first meeting are here, after January would probably be right time.
Yeah, we'll put that on the January agenda.
You probably also want to take a look at I J K. In addition to I J L, which is supplemental material selection and adoption, which is more of the music and video that you were mentioning as a different, the different media and format.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, all righty. So, the first two text recommendations are both what is generally considered in, in literature classics. Even though Diary of Anne Frank is from the twentieth century, it is, has been considered a classic for quite a while and the same with Tale of Two Cities.
So, the fact that it's just coming to us now, does that mean no one's been reading Diary of Anne Frank?
They actually have. I, I made a note that it was formally used in grade eight. And maybe you, the board, didn't necessarily feel like it wanted to consider it. But because we're realigning the literature and nonfiction in all the grades, I felt that the major ones, we would want to have that discussion.
Was that also due to the curriculum swapping out the, the history in grades? Wasn't that the one that was changed around so it made more sense to give it that there?
That's the world, that's A Tale of Two Cities, yes. But that hadn't been read before. I was thinking of Anne Frank, which was used in eighth grade, moved to seventh grade. So, I guess maybe we'll stick with one at a time. Let's...
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
That's okay, no, I'm the one that brought them together.
I thought maybe this was the one.
Yep. So, they are anxious to use these two. We, we had some other requests that we put on hold. But, so, Anne Frank used to be used in eighth grade. The, the text itself, again, to align with some rigor expectations, would be more appropriate for grade seven. And because the history, that, I think it was used in eighth grade because of social studies. But the drafted but unadopted social studies curriculum really calls for social studies to only go chronologically through the Civil War Reconstruction and then high school goes beyond that. So, really doesn't go with the eighth grade topics anyway. So, anyway, the request is that we use it in seventh grade. Questions, comments?
Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this. Diary of Anne Frank for the grade seven. I'm not sure how I should word that, but curriculum change.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, approved five zero zero.
Thank you.
Chris, do you want to speak to Tale of Two Cities? That is a switch in the curriculum, World Studies to tenth grade and American Studies to eleventh grade. Again, to align with both literature expectations and historical content.
Yes. I think I already said, you still said it, so I guess that's good. You said it better than I did, so...
All I'll say is, I don't remember anything from Dickens being an excellent for engaging and stimulating. Just my opinion.
It will be a challenge. But, but it, it can be done and it can be done well. It's one of the more engaging pieces, other than a Christmas Carol or something. They, I think that our curriculum doesn't have a lot of what you would consider classics. And certainly Dickens needs to be considered. So, they'd like to give us a try and certainly there's strong justification for it.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to make this curriculum change for the Tale of Two Cities.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, staying, motion carries five zero zero.
I'm going to skip fiddlesticks for just a second because I'm not sure what your pleasure is for the math curriculum. My anticipation was that you may want to take more time taking a look at it. I wasn't able to get the final formatting done till late Sunday night. So, you didn't get it in as timely a manner as I'd hoped.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it. Do you guys want to take some time to actually go through it?
Yeah, I think we had actually said when we got documents like this, we would get them one meeting and vote at the next, just to make sure people had it.
Just so you know, the substance from the drafts, the draft that I gave you before three months ago is identical. The content is. With the exception of the honors delineation, I mean, in case you had some familiarity with that, the honors courses added to the high school, the honors option for Algebra I and then honors geometry and honors algebra II. And the third or fourth page that are instructional practices, not the standards, but the internal practices page. And that page actually did go to the staff as a start school, things to put in place. And I attached it and reformatted it, so it would be all one document. Just so you know, there are files in our district drive so that teachers can go in and just get their grade level. So, then, and we did that because the constant revision over the two-year period and so teachers could go in and just see their part. And having to put it all together in a hundred and twenty-five pages now gives you a whole document and...
Is there a reason why then I only have seventy-five pages?
I don't have. Still see more?
Yeah.
I only have through the eighth grade in, from my...
I have only seventy-five pages here, too.
So, I was wondering what happened to the high school?
Well, I either sent the wrong copy to Michelle or it's possible Michelle used a different file.
Supplies got cut.
Because there was an old file with a similar name. So, we'll get you the right file.
Okay, you can just send out the...
Yep.
Don't blame me.
Yeah, no, I'm not blaming you, but it's possible that with the old file, they got mixed up.
She definitely blames you.
There's a cover page, it shouldn't start with K and I see kindergartens all over the place. So, yep, I'm glad I mentioned that. Okay. I thought that perhaps...
Since that's a hundred and twenty-five page document, can I ask that we actually not truly vote on that for our, until our third meeting this week, this month? Because that's a lot of stuff to digest. I don't know if I'd be ready to discuss and vote next week.
I do have a flight next week, so I'll get some time.
And my budget is sleep.
So, I'm, you know, I understand we need to get to it if we don't get to it in December. I know it'll be something that we'll get to in January. But that's a, that's a major change in curriculum. And I, and I also think that it may be something that we ought to put up on our, out on our website. And we should encourage the community through some process to go out and take a look at, at our recommended change of a math curriculum from K to twelve. And then we actually should open up one of our meetings, either December or first one in January, to the public to come in and, after they've had a chance to look at it, to come in and maybe present their ideas or their, their thoughts about it. And that way, the board would be in a better shape to approve it, maybe even going into January or something. So, but I do, I understand there's a sense that it needs to be approved. But I think there ought to be just a little bit more process and it's then us five trying to read through a hundred and twenty-five pages and thinking we're all mathematicians at this point in time. So, that's just my thoughts.
It's a good idea. I think it's also going to bring us a lot of pain, but still a good idea.
They bring a lot of pain. We're not looking for someone to dissect all a hundred and twenty-five pages, so...
Is it already posted on the website?
No.
No, I don't think so. Can we get the...
I don't do that until the board looks at it.
Okay, can we post it then?
Yes, Michelle and I will make sure I give her the right one.
Yeah, you sent me the file, I just looked, you sent me the file with seventy-five pages.
Then I sent you the wrong one. Like I said, I wasn't legal. Okay, so, I was thinking Jesse Harlander was going to join us, but...
He was here.
Oh.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. I misunderstood. I saw at the beginning that we had removed the donation from the agenda. And then I saw that on future items, it said fiddlesticks. So, I understood that that was going to be tabled.
No, I didn't even see him, I kept looking.
Yeah.
As you say, I thought he was actually behind you, I just couldn't see him.
Well, we're going to, we'll give it a try and you need him back. I feel badly because he left his second job to come. I, I didn't see him. The reason it was taken off a donation is we need to deal with the approval for it.
But it was on the future items, so I understood it had been tabled.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I brought a prop. What you see is kids doing this all the time because what they do is they learn to cradle the ball. But anyway, a major discussion in PERC was the safety aspect. So, you see a lot of detail in the report about safety. Softball, little stick, plastic, can pass that that way. The other thing that when Jesse and I were...
They have to go through the bullying presentation before they get one of those.
Yeah, order more safety reports.
When Jesse and I were discussing the proposal, we talked about safety extensively. It went to PERC once, then we reworked the proposal. And Jesse called Primex and spoke to our representative there. And she went through a little checklist of things with him about informing parents and, and that kind of thing. And she, I actually have an email that says, she says that it, everything checks out from her perspective. So, that was one piece that we definitely wanted to check on.
So, what's the age group for this?
The age group is grades one through four.
Setting up that lacrosse league, really?
I, I think from an instructional point of view, if you read through the standards that are being met as an instructional tool now, not as curriculum because it's the, it's the knowledge and skills that are, that will be in the curriculum that's still in draft form. That this is a tool that could be used among many. The thing is that this is right now a very popular sport as things come and go. And so, it can be engaging for kids, whereas some kids may not be quite as engaged in, in some other use of materials. And it has the potential to hook kids into activities beyond. And yes, it's not a secret that, you know, high school kids and middle school kids are playing lacrosse now. Our consideration in PERC very deliberately was not looking at this as, and I'll use the term propaganda or promotion, if you will, propaganda not in the, any particular, but a generic perspective for any organization or anything. But just that across the country, it's becoming a very popular activity, even kids who don't play in a formal, organized way, but do it in their backyards or doing it rec leagues. College, high school and college kids are doing it just for fun, out on the, you know, the lawns and so forth. And there is a lot of skill, definitely. The hand-eye coordination is a huge aspect. You know, soccer's a great game, you only use your feet, you know? So, in this way, you're using hands and feet. So, it's just a different resource, a different material to use to meet a lot of those, those standards.
I am smiling because you ever see boys when they get a stick in their hands? They want to whack things.
I can see my son smacking some. Well, no, that's true. My son played fiddlesticks last year, he was kindergarten last year. And my first thing was like, they're going to kill each other with these sticks. But the coaches do a fantastic job of, you're not supposed to try and go in and get the ball. It's the first kid touches it, they blow the whistle, they stop play, the kid picks it up and they blow the whistle and resume again. So, they do a very good job of organizing the chaos. I'm reading the instructions, I don't understand how a first grader can play this or a second grader. My, my son was in kindergarten last year. You have to catch it three times or pass it three times before you shoot?
Not yourself. In other words, you can't get the ball and immediately take a shot. Not yourself. In other words, you can't get the ball and immediately take a shot. You have to pass it to a friend. And so in other words, it gets lots of.
So passing is just putting it in the other person's net?
Yeah.
Yeah, or tossing it into their net.
They start from that and they move further apart.
You do it this way.
Might not be a pass, might be a catch, might be a pass, scoop.
Instead of hits the ground, it changes.
The effect of that.
And they do it to involve more of the kids, because if the same kid always tries to shoot, then it becomes an off.
That makes more sense.
I know the fiddlesticks program through rec, which was just kindergarten and maybe first grade, had, I think, twenty-five or thirty students in it, so it is extremely popular.
It can't get any worse than floor hockey. Floor hockey is probably worse.
Well, because they take big back.
It's like street hockey, they body check into the curb.
So I, I appreciate this is here, but I'm struggling to understand why it's here.
Because the, I think it started because the rec.
No, 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 why?
Why here, here?
Why is, why is the board gonna adopt fiddlesticks?
Well, two reasons. One, you're gonna be asked to accept a donation because we don't have budgeted money and the Lacrosse Association would like us to accept it. Number two, going back to your policy, I was using, and explain this to PERC, I was using the broadest definition of curriculum resource that either small groups or large groups would be using. So not one book for the library or a classroom, you know, materials, but when a small group or a large group of students were going to use a resource, then we would vet it through PERC. Whether it's a video.
So I, I guess I look, my perspective is I look at the introduction of fiddlesticks. If it's substituting for a different sport or if it's something new, it's no different than if the biology class decides they're gonna dissect a frog this year instead of something, a snake. It's a change in how your.
But there was a, a question of, of safety and use. So if you don't wanna.
Well, is this something that happens?
If you don't wanna vote on the issue of.
I'm trying to understand.
And that's my rationale.
I would say that under that, if we want to change the footballs that we're gonna buy, we gotta make, we should do the same. And I'm trying to, you know.
Is this a physical education?
It's still the same sport.
How do you know it's not hard?
Is this where this will be handled? So what's the difference between kickball and this? If they're playing kickball or they're playing tag, since we allow tag still in Litchfield. And I mean, I, I think that's the question that you have is, if we already have recreational activity in our physical education class where this is going to be added, I would imagine, is that we don't micromanage down to that process?
I mean, that's kinda where I'm going. If, if there was some new piece of curriculum that this satisfied, then yes, I would say.
Okay, good. That's great guidance.
It's my viewpoint. I'm trying to.
Yeah.
How do you feel about that?
To stay at the level.
I think you can view it either way. I see where Julie's coming from. It is, it, it is a different resource to meet the curriculum goals. Therefore, interpreting the policy broadly, she brought it in case the board wanted to.
But, so I go back to the science class that changes what they're dissecting. It's a different material.
Well, but it's, but it's a tool.
Okay, so if she decided, if she decided to do like a riflery class, you'd be all right by that?
Yeah, I would. If it was done safely. I mean, that's an extreme example, but if we're gonna change microscopes, we don't, that doesn't come before the board.
But I'm not sure the Primex would be appreciative of that.
I don't, I think Frank might have something he wants to say about that. But I, I'm just trying to draw where you're, I, I guess I don't consider that a material the same as I would consider book selection, movie selection.
Well, let's, I mean, let's.
It is, and I'm wrong, and I'm okay with it.
Well, let's take, look at this.
I'm just trying to.
That's why I said, I appreciate you're here.
We, we accepted what we, what we, what I think they could have done, it's just sort of like the rock, the rock wall that we added at GMS. That was, that was in the physical education curriculum, which was going to add different tasks to the kids. They asked us to accept the donation of the rock wall.
I don't remember approving curriculum for it, though.
But we didn't approve any curriculum, other than they're gonna climb up the wall. And here, we're gonna hope that they play fiddlesticks.
Okay, so now can we consider accepting the donation?
Yeah.
Sure. I want a quick editorialization. If we don't start using invisible skipping ropes, so no kids fail, I want a say on that one.
How do you count? That was a double.
I just wanna clarify that the lacrosse donation that was taken off the agenda had nothing to do with fiddlesticks. It was a CHS lacrosse donation that we, that they hadn't received yet. That's why it was taken off the agenda.
We still have to accept this, though?
Yeah.
Although if we haven't accepted it, how'd you get the stick?
I have no idea. I just asked for one and here it is. It's a loner. It's a loner.
Scott, how does the physical education teacher and, and your administration take about this new program?
They made the proposal.
We, yes, we made the proposal. Jesse came to me. I knew that Julie wanted to be involved in any discussions on change in curriculum and activities that involved a whole new unit, basically. I mean, it is a kinda significant change, so I do understand why I came forward. And then the safety concerns that came up, Jesse and I had, I had the very same questions, because my kids played lacrosse. And when adult males play lacrosse, they are really geared up. I mean, helmets, yeah. And when, but however, when women's leagues play, they play without helmets at all. No, you know, and it's because it's played in a different way.
No, we're just tougher.
Well, that's what they like to say. Right. So it, it's, you know, the game is adapted, so it's a more passing game. And it's considered safe. So I really do commend Jesse, because he kept doing every homework assignment that was given. He looked at the National Lacrosse Site, he looked at NAFAD, their sites on curriculum, you know, standards. He did contact the insurance company. And I feel convinced that with, between the footwork he's done on how to make it safe, on the adapted equipment, and his strength as a teacher, that we can have this as a safe activity in the elementary school. Can't guarantee it, but because it is equipment and we're tossing a ball. I will add, however, that I did engage a staff member last night in purposely hitting me with a ball so I could experience what that was like. It wasn't so bad, so.
Did you get that on video or anything?
She had a sense of humor. I said, do it, just hit me, I'll turn around. Yeah, so I wanted to know.
Guess can we get a motion to accept the donation?
What is the donation?
We don't know the donation.
Thirty, thirty sets.
Oh, thirty sets.
Because the kids.
And it's from the Litchfield Lacrosse Association.
It is.
I think they get, I think STX or local business donates to them every year, and then they are just turning it over to us, basically.
I make a motion to accept the donation of the fiddlesticks.
How about balls?
The sets, the balls and the stick.
You're gonna have thirty kids each with a ball.
Well, you have to have them when they're just practicing.
I know.
Oh, sorry.
See, GMS wants to have a team that they can go compete in. They want to be the fiddlesticks champion of the elementary schools in New Hampshire.
We have not talked about interscholastic sports yet, so.
You're gonna have a transportation budget next, you know, at GMS for co-curricular activities.
Don't fund it, John, Scott.
Well, you know, lacrosse, lacrosse is moving quickly. They, they, they must have a good connection, so.
Did we get a second?
No, we didn't.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you.
Would you like to take this back to?
I will.
Put on his desk so he'll be happy in the morning?
Because we're only getting twenty-nine.
That's huge. I'm done.
Mr. Thompson?
Okay.
Prинсель's report.
All right, so in the curriculum and instruction, the section, I'm aware that a lot of this is really about assessment. And the reason, I would like to explain that first in a general way. We've really been focusing on how we do assessment and how we use it to help us be better teachers. So there is a lot of curriculum work that went on last year in rewriting and this year in implementation. But AmesWeb, we've, I know I was at several board discussions about that. We actually, so teachers, so you know, we worked on that on October sixteenth. I haven't been here for a while, so I had to think, how far back do I go to give you a picture? But today, Louise Voitasek, who is our consultant on AmesWeb, splitter time between our school and the middle school to help our staff get a better understanding of how, what it is and how to use it. Our performance assessment team went to November seventh to the, the session, the day-long session, it's new. And we brought to that session our first performance task, which was around writing narratives. And so what happens is you bring it there, you get feedback from teachers from all different schools, because they mix up the cohorts. And then we had also implemented and, and used the prompt and the rubric. And then we bring it back, revise and edit, and we're busy working on the second assessment, which we're going to take back, I believe it's in February. And we had not yet decided when I wrote this whether it would be persuasive or informational writing as the second task for the school. But it is persuasive writing. Informational writing is really leading into research reports and that kind of thing. So we're gonna do that towards the end of the year, as it'll be a longer unit and much more involved. We have applied to be a field test site for the smarter balance test in the spring. And I don't think they've made decisions yet, but hopefully soon. I wanted to just mention that after last year's curriculum work, our teachers did look at our report cards. And while we didn't change any broad areas, some of the benchmarks were changed to reflect changes due to the new curriculum frameworks. So some things are taught in different grades, for example, and the standards for achievement have been ratcheted up a little bit from ninety to ninety-five percent consistency in order to, to achieve mastery of that skill. I just mentioned quickly some in-house and traveling field trips. We do quite a few in-house through the PTO programs, and I, I think that's really valuable. It certainly is cost-effective. The students don't have to spend a long time on a bus, and some of them are quite interesting. But I'm not going to read all of those unless you think that would be useful. I wanted to acknowledge a new staff member who really took the ball and ran, and that was Victoria Mango. We were looking for a scarecrow jamboree advisor, and she stepped in for Paula Cullen Kent, who has done that for thirty consecutive years. That's really unheard of in my experience. So Mrs. Mango stepped in and it all went quite well, and we had good participation in the scarecrow jamboree again.
The best scarecrow one.
What's that?
Is that yours?
My daughter's. And her partner's.
Yeah.
Somehow, I, I think there was some engineering help provided.
I, we did not help.
Her partner was Derek.
We helped with a stand, so it wouldn't fall over and kill anybody, but other than that.
And we thank you for that. Okay. I also just wanted to, you know, this, this could be on every report made from every school, I'm sure. But I was reflecting on all that our PTO does. I went to the meeting a couple of weeks ago. And they do all sorts of things for the school. So I just would like to take this moment, again, I'm not gonna read all of the activities that they support, but there's a great many things that never make it into the budget because our PTO does those activities. And I think that's an important thing to acknowledge and thank them for their ongoing fundraising and also supporting some really wonderful activities in the school. I wanted to mention in particular, and this is supported by the PTO, Destination of Imagination. Last year, I wrote we had two teams, but I think we actually had four. And one, two went to the regional meet and one went on to the state meet, as I recall. I did attend that. It was at Salem High School, I guess. And this year, we have six teams at the elementary level, which we're really excited about. It keeps our building hopping all night, most of the week. The, I'd also like to thank the Litchfield Fire Department. They came in and did a grade-level presentation on fire safety for every grade level in support of Fire Prevention Week, which was actually the second week of October, I believe. But because they have to leave to do fires, putting out, it takes a while for them to get it all done. Also, thanks to the Litchfield Lions Club, who come in every year and do vision screening for all of our students. That is a great help, and as we know, if students have undetected vision problems, it can really impact their education. And so they really help us find that out. It's a great help. On October eighteenth, we had Tiger in. That's the program from Plymouth State University to address social issues, bullying kind of things. And we actually chose a slightly different program this year. It was called Let Your Stars Shine. It jumped out because one of the actors is actually an adult with Down Syndrome, and that's the way they present that in the, their literature. And he is in the skits, a person with Down Syndrome. So it really addresses how we treat and view and interact with people with disabilities in a very direct way. It was quite a moving presentation. And as you know, probably Tiger, they keep changing what the five letters stand for depending on the focus of the, the presentation. In this case, it was tolerance, inclusion, giving, empathy, and respect. And then Ms. Robinson, the guidance counselor, used the Tiger principles to organize anti-bullying week activities in that all of the students at every grade level wrote about one of those things, each grade level did one. And then she read those every morning of the week, five letters, five days, it works out well. And just keep reinforcing the things that the students learned at the assembly. The PTO holiday, these are upcoming events. The Holiday Store will be run on December sixteenth and seventeenth. So we want parents to be aware of that, because students bring in money and buy them presents. Holiday Concert is scheduled for next Tuesday with a snow date of the eleventh. The PTO Father-Daughter Dance is coming up in Friday, January twenty-fourth. The last I knew, the PTO is still looking for a chair for that event.
You'll be attending that, won't you, John?
I could be. I could be. I could be, or not.
Or not. It would be difficult for him to organize it, though, because he's gonna be participating, so. Really should be a mother that.
Oh, it's a mother-son movie, Father-Daughter Dance.
Be sure of the mother-son movie.
The PTO Monarchs Night is scheduled for February twenty-third, that's the first Sunday of vacation. And the annual Bingo Night is scheduled for March fourteenth. Items of note, we have chosen our student council. Their first task was to help with the food drive, and we actually are, in our quiet way, competitive. I was cheering the day before the last day when we were in second place. However, I think the high school brought in something like twelve hundred items between the next to the last day and the last day.
They do that every year, yeah.
So next year, I'll tell everyone to keep it till Friday.
They just wait and then they go.
It's like everything. They wait till the last minute, then they get it done. They're getting prepared for college, you know?
I wanted to give some information back about the parent drop-off walkway. The solution was, as you know, there's congestion and concern about students getting out. We had put in a proposal for a sidewalk, but a less expensive and, you know, kind of provisional solution for right now is that we have traffic barriers, so there is a designated walkway within the driveway. It also limits driving to single lane, so people prevented from passing during drop-off. And that's working out quite well, actually. So, thank you for that. The Veterans Day Assembly, we hosted a special ceremony for veterans and families on Friday before Veterans Day. And we received a very nice letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Center in Manchester. It's only two lines, so I would like to read it. It's only two lines, so I would like to read it. "On behalf of the Manchester veterans and staff members, we would like to extend our appreciation to you for the beautiful handmade cards for Veterans Day. These cards reflect the concern that you feel for our veterans and for their service to our country. Your cards were shared with our residents and outpatients throughout the medical center. Their response was tremendous. Recipients commented on how wonderful they were and how proud they were to receive them. Thank you for bringing a smile to our veterans." And that is from the Director of Voluntary Service at the hospital.
For one second, Scott.
Yes.
I was present. Mr. Bork, I believe, was also present. That was one of the most educational, moving, and well-done ceremonies that I have ever seen for Remembrance Day. The number of veterans, whether they be parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, and the staff, did just a truly exceptional job. I mean, there were times that there was barely a dry eye in the house. It was a very moving experience. I don't know, Mr. Bork?
It was. It was one of the better ones. I've been to Supple in the GMS, and it was done very well.
And we have Mrs. LaBelle, and Mrs. Miller, and a committee, actually, of people to thank for that. The thing that was different was the cards. They haven't done that before. So I applaud that they keep trying to change it up and make it better and different. So it obviously had an impact, too. Thank you. All righty. I've just lost my screen. I might have to stop. Oh, no, the last, there's only one more thing. Tools for Schools. We have, for many years prior to my arrival at GMS, we had a Tools for Schools ongoing committee. And recently, we've talked about, and then what happened is, the best practices from Tools for Schools, which is about environmental quality in a school, became really institutionalized in practices. For example, we changed filters rather than quarterly. We change them every month during high pollen season and that kind of thing. Not so in the dry winter months where there's not a lot of particulate matter. But we felt it was time to revisit that, and so we are getting the material that's current because they revised the Tools for Schools recently, and we'll be looking to start up a committee. Teachers have agreed to work on that. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? I think we're all set, and for the record, he'd asked to be excused early because he has to run an errand for Dr. Hian before nine o'clock.
I'm sorry.
Our point is coming right after.
I'll wait. Yep.
You're not kidding.
Okay. I'll start like Scott with the curriculum and instruction piece, and a lot of this is going to sound familiar to you. So like Scott said, going back a couple of, it's been quite a few weeks, I'm not going to read the whole report to you, but I'll just highlight a few things. So I've been talking about quality performance assessment, the network that we've been a part of now for two years. We're part of the secondary network, and now we're part of the elementary-middle network this year. We have a team of five teachers on the team and attended over the summer, and then, most recently, in Manchester. So what we've done, like Scott said, we brought sample assessments to the network meeting, shared them. They broke us out, and the teachers got some good feedback. We had established a goal, a timeline, back in the summer, so we've been keeping to that. Part of the work on the late arrival day was specifically about this. Teachers bringing assessments and then following the specific protocols that we're following with the network, and that's gone really well. In fact, and we've got real positive feedback from our staff on how that's been going. So in December, we will now, in our next late arrival day, continue that work. Teachers have now implemented all those assessments. They're going to bring back student samples and calibrate that to rubrics, and we're moving, actually like Scott, to common rubrics related to different types of writing. And in the spring, our focus is actually going to be similar, persuasive or argument opinion writing with a common rubric. So that's what we're working toward, and that work will be ongoing. I'll bring back, hopefully, some more to show you as we go on in the year. Also Ames Web, we had training today. We had a team trained back over the summer, and then we've had ongoing work through our chat team, and how to not only use Ames Web, but how to do a better job of progress monitoring with kids. And this actually leads into the next bullet of RTI, Response to Intervention. And really, it's a three-tiered approach. Tier one is where about eighty percent of the students are, you know, most of our students are. Tier two is ten to fifteen percent of the students, and then tier three is the most intensive interventions and require the most intensive interventions. So with Ames Web, it's really made that process easier for identifying the tiers of students and really prescribing for reading and math what they need. And we're finding that it's really been successful so far this year, not only the progress monitoring piece, but also for tier one, tier two, trying to move the kids up those tiers and having conversations around that. We've become now part of a cohort that the Department of Ed offered this year and is free, which is always good. So we have a team of six that are involved in this cohort. There's no strings attached. It's just providing schools with strategies and tools to do a better job of meeting the needs of each tier. And so they went to their first meeting two weeks ago, got a lot of good information that they're bringing back to our chat team, and we're continuing to work on that. Going way back to October, we had our kneecap testing, which is always in October. Scores will be released and mailed home in February, usually released around the end of January. Blizzard bags were sent home in November. We've had no snow days yet, but we'll see how that goes through the winter.
Freezing rain advisory for tomorrow morning.
I did see that, yes.
Where's Jack when I need him?
Well, that won't be a blizzard bag anyway.
Call them Friday night. They were calling for maybe freezing rain, or Sunday night rather this week.
I saw that. Just one other thing that we've been doing this year in our staff meetings. The district purchased some books for professional development over the summer. I think I had mentioned Core Six is the name of the book, and really, it's strategies to implement in a classroom that focus on different skills required in the revised curriculum. So this past month, we focused on compare and contrast and how you can use that to bring a higher level of cognitive rigor with students. Back in September, we focused on reading for meaning, how to treat, teach kids strategies for close reading, and we'll continue that through the six chapters, so we're going to cover that over the course of the year. Just a quick update on a piece of technology. Sometimes, you know, we go through the budget process where we are now, and we don't always hear all of the details of things that have been implemented and how that's going. So I just want to give you an update. We had purchased computers for the library, and they were installed over the summer. We also have a fifth-grade computer class that's been finding them just really useful, valuable, not only for those fifth-grade classes, the keyboarding and things that they use them for, research, but also students coming into the library this year and using those for research. It's just been a wonderful tool. So thank you for your support on that, and we continue to build our technology, and it's really supported what's happening in the classroom. A few acknowledgements. We went, attended our Blue Ribbon Award. It's a big state award ceremony in Manchester back in October. And as Scott was saying, and I echo those words for our PTO, there's just so many things over the course of the year that our PTO supports, not only financially, but just the amount of time that these people dedicate to our school, to the initiatives in our schools. So it was a well-deserved award, a real nice ceremony. The keynote speaker was a woman named Victoria Arlen, and she gave a really moving speech at the ceremony. She was, you might be familiar with her name. She grew up in Hampstead, lives in Exeter now. She was, became a paraplegic and was a medalist in the Paraplegic Games in London in 2012, won four medals. She had contracted a virus when she was in fifth grade that took over her spinal system, and it was a neurological virus that left her paralyzed. So she gave a real, powerful presentation at the Blue Ribbon Ceremony. The guidance counselors and I were talking about her when I got back to the school. It was, just seemed like something that would be really powerful for kids. And she actually came to the school yesterday and gave an enrichment, it was an enrichment assembly, fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, and just, it was really moving. So that came as a result of the Blue Ribbon Award, which was a really nice ceremony. Also, the PTO contributed dinner and lunch during our parent conferences. We had about fifteen, twenty crockpots filled with very tasty items I like to eat, so I enjoyed that. But thank you to them. They extended themselves, and they were present at the dinners as well. Our Raiders volleyball team won the tri-county championship. I had to give them a shout-out. That goes back a ways now, but they had a, we've had a volleyball team only for a couple of years, and they've been very successful. This was their second championship already, so they've won two years in a row. They also won an invitational tournament back in October. We also had a Veterans Day ceremony that, we had a few veterans there. It's become a tradition. Our Unified Arts Team puts on not only the ceremony, but plans the ceremony and puts on the breakfast for them. It was a real touching ceremony, and Colonel Kelly from the high school was the keynote speaker. We had students read, and they did a great job. The writing becomes part of the language arts classes. They have a little contest. Our congratulations to our Lego Robotics team. We had some volunteers from the high school. One is in the audience here. Max and Marcus Rothaker, along with Trevor Rizzo, three high school students, helped out with the team through the fall this year. I don't know if they knew what they were getting into when that started, but it was a lot of time. They did a great job, and then we went to the competition, the regional competition in Merrimack just a few weeks ago. And we didn't win, we didn't place, but we did receive a teamwork medal. And this has been sort of revitalized this year, and we learned at the tournament that there is a lot of work that goes into this, a lot of time and planning, and these guys did a great job, and I think we have something to build on now for the next few years. Along with that, after Lego Robotics ended, some of these same students and some others are now involved in our Math Counts Team, which was competing last year. Mr. Blow, a parent, has volunteered to take that on this year, and so I will give you updates. They will be competing later in the winter. We mentioned the food pantry, the food drive. We have seven students who were selected to audition for the honors band. We'll find out their status in January, but seven is a lot of students relative to our size, so good luck to them. We had an eighth-grade meeting for Washington DC in October, very well-attended. We continue to plan for that big trip in May. We had our parent conferences back, as the other two schools did. Parent conferences are always a challenge to accommodate all the parents on those two days, so we continue to have overflow conferences through the month of December. But there's just been a lot of interest involvement, and as always, so we will continue to meet through December on those. And we had, for the first time, a rock-paper-scissors tournament. Yes, there is such a thing. The state has run this now for a couple of years, and we had a pep rally back before Thanksgiving. We had the championship rock-paper-scissors right there in front of all the students, and a lot of cheering. It was a very lively pep rally, and champions were awarded at that event. They actually move on to the state round now. They, I'm serious, they have this, and the kids are very excited.
Straight up there with bass fishing and, what's the other one?
Viddlesticks.
Viddlesticks.
Yeah, yeah. Just a few upcoming events. We have our Drama Club performance. Thank you to the high school for accommodating us. They will be performing in the high school auditorium next week. A school dance coming up, and a fifth-grade movie night.
The play is?
Dorothy and Wonderland.
Dorothy and Wonderland. No, that's not a printing error. And the shows are next Thursday and Friday evening.
Thursday and Friday evening at seven o'clock. Here in the auditorium.
You're in the auditorium.
And we might have lights next year.
All right. Nice.
I'll see you there Friday night.
Should be good.
Yes, we'll be here Thursday night. We'll hear them in the background.
Any questions for Mr. Lukler?
So tonight I brought with me the Director of Guidance because Jody has some things that she would like to discuss with the board. Curriculum instruction is pretty similar to the other two schools. We also are doing quality performance assessments. I think it's great that we're all aligning and we're all moving with curriculum in the same direction. The high school faculty is participating in a book study. We're reading The Tipping Point by Malcolm Gladwell, and we're sharing information on that. We're also working on our late arrival days. We've been working on PLCs, on assessments.
PLC being?
Professional learning communities. Our focus this December 11th is going to be on 504s and IEPs and compliance with 504s and IEPs. We are exploring the possibility of having a writing center next fall at Campbell High School. That's something that Jody will talk about. We also applied to be a pilot for the Smarter Balance test this spring, and we're still waiting for information on whether we've been accepted. Last week, the NHIA presented at Campbell High School Life of an Athlete, where students participated in a training on prevention of drug and alcohol and how to be a better athlete through nutrition. Last time I was here, Mr. York asked me questions about parking lot money, so I wanted to pass this out. This is information on things that we would like to do or have previously used parking lot money for, so I think that's important for you to have. Also, the Youth and Risk Survey, which I will give you a copy electronically. This is the survey that we took that is given by UNH, and it asks students questions on drug and alcohol use and abuse. There's all different types of questions. It's based on state averages and Campbell averages. The top is Campbell. So these are black and white. I'll give them to you in color, but the top score are Campbell. The next is state averages, which just gives you information. I just made them for board members, but I will.
Sorry, Trish.
So it'll be good, it'll be good reading. It'll be good reading, and then we can discuss it. But the reason that we do this survey is when we're looking to write grants or when we're trying to decide what type of speakers to bring in for the student body, this gives us good information and documentation.
Can we add this to our website?
We can put it on our website.
There's nothing identifiable.
No.
Both the district and the school website.
It's all anonymous, and what is explained to Trish earlier is, the way that the survey is written is they're able to determine if someone is not being truthful, because they'll ask a question sometimes three or four times, and then if the respondent gives different answers, they'll throw that question out or that survey out.
Are they all the answers or just the vague questions?
All, they have bank questions that they ask in different ways. So acknowledging, I'm going to just, I'll save Jody for last. Again, Allison Robochak, she was our 10th grader who did the presentation on bullying. It was really amazing that, you know, a 10th-grade student was able to do a presentation for the entire student body, and I for the entire student body and I think she really touched a lot of people's hearts by that presentation. Our musical Guys and Dolls, I want to give a shout out to Jill Delo and Phil Martin. I thought the show was exceptional. Student Council, they worked really hard on filling up the food bank. A big thank you goes out to Kathy Snyder and members of our community, because for the first time during parent teacher conferences, we don't have a PTO, but we had numbers of parents who donated food for our teachers. We have NHIA, we have three students who are on the NHIA Leadership Team. They're Emily Paquin, Connor Perry, and Amanda Miller. They were very active this fall. They went to the NHIA and planted tulips to support Red Ribbon Week and anti-drugs. They're also now gearing up for the Penguin Plunge. We are hoping that a school board member will also dip in the ocean with us and support Special Olympics. It's really an amazing experience. They do have warming tents and, but it's, it's something that we have a flock together at Campbell High School that's going to go and we would encourage anyone who would like to join our team to, to join it. It's something.
I'm guessing there'll be at least one school board member already there.
Right.
So it would just make sense that, that one jump in as well, right?
Who's going?
I'm assuming Amanda Miller's your daughter, right?
Yeah.
We have a deep appreciation for our.
Is that chair position still open?
They do have a pampered penguin where you don't have to jump in. You can just go and raise money.
I took a cold shower.
They're a huddle penguin.
But what's the date on that?
Penguins is called a huddle.
Huddle, there.
Instead of a flock.
Huddle.
Deep appreciation for our grounds crew. They did a great job with Red Ribbon Week, creating the ribbon. All of our students dressed in red to represent their commitment to prevent drug abuse. We did have the, Mike Quarle, our SRO, and the area police departments come in for a drug search on November 19th. And it was, it was very positive for the first time since we've brought the dogs to Campbell High School. We did not find any drugs or alcohol at the school, so I thought that was a positive thing. Brittany McNulla signed a Division One Athletic Scholarship in softball. That was a really big day for us to have a student sign for Division One, which, by the way, we've had a few of them and for a small school, that is really quite amazing. Last week, Mr. Cretian did Treburge Day and it was freezing cold out there, but the students had a great time and they dressed their parts. You know, I, I would like to give a shout out to our athletic department, John Patterson and John Miller. We do have a new scoreboard, which we were, last time I was here, we were talking about. It's up. We had the football game under the lights. And I'd also like to thank the budget committee. I thought last night's process was, it was, it was very good and I thought it was very transparent and, and I, I actually enjoyed the meeting.
If you have to go back, is this like the butter up for the return performance that you have to make?
And now I'm gonna turn it over to Jody.
Hi, everybody. I have a folder for each one of you in order, so there's no mystery to what, which one is yours. In the folder on the top is the main reason that I asked both Dr. Foggren and Ms. Rothaus to come tonight, is to have an opportunity to relook at how we are looking at independent study courses at Campbell High School. There's different ways that students can do an independent study. Sometimes students will not be able to put a course into their schedule because of conflicts, so they may take that class during a study hall with teacher assistance. But what I'm referring to is courses that are taken above and beyond those that are offered here after all options have been exhausted. So for example, over this summer, I was approached by four different students asking to take AP Calc BC, because at Campbell, we were fortunate enough to have these students taking AP Calc AB as either sophomores or juniors, which as you know, is exceptional and just moved very rigorous in, in the process. So these students approached me and asked about taking the class here independently and then asked Ms. Angelini as well if she would be able to provide some insight and support to them, which I know that she has done. So in the end, when school started, only two stood and two remained that they continued to want to take AP Calc BC. It's not a class that's offered through V-Lax, so it truly is a curriculum that these students have to develop through teacher assistance. I, we still have these two students that are taking this class now. So what I did was I sent an email out to every guidance director in the state and asked how their school handles true independent study classes when all options have been exhausted. So what I have there in front of you for you to review is based off of Concord High School and Hanover High School specifically and what their model is in allowing students not only to take these courses, but then to receive a grade and credit and a grade that goes towards their GPA. Currently, our policy states that anybody that does an independent study class, they do not have a grade that is calculated into their GPA. And when you have a student that are working to teach themselves in many ways above and beyond what we are offering, that should be considered to go into their GPA. And this is gonna be an issue for us going forward and it's a, it's a nice issue for us to have, that we have students that are going to be looking to do AP Calc BC in the future. Another class that's been coming up often in the guidance office is the question of, are we able to do, you know, an AP Psychology class has been another one that's been raised as well. So that's what you see there in front of you for the independent study. And then the second section of information I have for you there, just wanted to give each one of you a little bit of insight into what information I can pull from the Naviance program that our students use. And students we are logging on now as early as freshman year, we're going into freshman seminar classes. We are having the students log on and showing them not only the career exploration piece, but also a program called Do What You Are, which is Myers-Briggs type of a program, so they can have a better understanding of what their learning styles are as well. So we're getting into the Naviance program much earlier, which has been a good thing this year. But another opportunity that we have through Naviance is surveys. And what better way to figure out if we're doing things correctly or what we can change to make things better for everybody than to send out a survey? So right there at the top is a, an alumni survey that we recently sent out for students who graduated in 2009 through 2012. There may have been some in here that were through 2013. We basically were asking where they went to school, what types of schools they went to, if they didn't go into a school, where they, where they continued on after they graduated. But what was really fantastic about this survey is, and that's where you'll see this salmon colored form, you'll see the specific question and answers from, from former alumni. That question was, what feedback would you like to give your teachers in regards to your preparation for life after high school? So you can see the individual answers. What's really great about this question was that a lot of kids really had a very positive experience here and gave us a little bit of insight. And one of the things that Lori and I looked at when we looked at this survey was there was a lot of concern about needing support around their writing. And that's why Lori mentioned that we were looking at maybe an opportunity to develop in a writing center within our school for next school year. And then the other survey, which I think I put in blue for all of you, was a question, is there anything else that you would like to tell us? So it even gives, the alumni give some other opportunities, some other options, things that we could change differently here. One of the things that I think we saw often here was they'd like consistency in their principal, their assistant principal, and their guidance staff. I think I heard, I've had three guidance counselors in the three years that I, you know, four years I attended Campbell High School. So other than that, it was a lot of positive, again, working on writing essays, research papers. There was a lot of interest in that. So this is just some good information for, for all of you to take a look at, to understand the types of information and data that I'm able to extract from Naviance as well. And last but not least, there is, I think I just left it in, oh, Dennis, it's in purple. Okay. That was information, this is a new part of.
Did you keep the colored one?
No, that's colored, you can keep the, same information. This is by year, as you can see, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009. It's the college enrollment and completion status of our former students. This information is extracted from the National Clearing House, so I would like to, I wish it was a little bit more informative. There's some, certainly some areas that we could appreciate be filled in a little bit more as an unspecified status. As you can see, in 2006, 35% of the 2006 class has graduated from college. 8% is still full-time, 11% still half-time. You guys can read the data on these.
It's a heck of a program, man. That's the eight-year program.
That's the eight-year-long expensive program. We improved.
No record, Daniel Day-Lewis or D-Day or whatever.
Who's paying for that? I don't know. I don't want to know. And then you'll see '07, or Class of '07 is, is even better. 44% of Class of '07 has already graduated from college. So this is just great data, just a little snapshot of the different types of things and information that we can get from Naviance. So it's a fabulous program. It makes, I know our teachers, Mr. Cooper can shake his head to this or not, it's pretty user-friendly. The students that are here, I mean, they've probably felt that it's pretty user-friendly as well. Teachers are able to upload recommendations through there. It's how we manage the whole college process and able to manage data and information at the same time. So it's a really great program.
By the way, for first-time college-going students, basically kids who leave high school and go to college, to complete a four-year program for those who complete it, the average amount of time as a full-time student is just under five years for a four-year program. Just so you know, it was 4.8 about five years ago and it was creeping up at that time. So my guess is five years on average.
Yeah, that data certainly supports that too.
For those who do complete.
So where does this data take you and the administration? Where do you go from here?
Well, that's where I bring this, this is really new to us, John. We really just ran this data within the last month. But this does help us determine programming, not only through the guidance and the services that we can provide and see how we can provide things differently, but also maybe what are things that we can look at in the building to help support our students so they maybe do feel even more prepared to go out. And when I look at this, the one clear thing was writing support jumped out the most.
Writing support and we also, with Dr. Hyun already, because we're looking at revising senior English, looking at the types of writing in senior English and seeing if, that there's some changes that we could make, you know, to support students.
And then finally, the last piece I have in there is just a timeline that we're looking at for our course selection process. So everyone has an FYI on what our timeline is on that process as well.
So will this be something that you will add to your monthly, bi-monthly report when we get administrative updates that this process, can we expect a guidance counselor corner to the CHS monthly or bi-monthly report?
Yep, and I think when, when I come, I'll bring Jody, because we have a lot of, a lot happening in guidance.
I think you do.
And I think that, you know, we can, we can tag-team this. The other report that I'm just gonna pass out and I just want you to share, this is just statistics that we shared yesterday in leadership on the library usage, number of students using the library, things that are happening in, in our library. And I think we have, you can see by that data, that we have a lot of students who are using the library and media services. As far as the parking lot funds, Mr. Perez came from Dover High School and at Dover High School, he did have a speaker from the, he's a former New England Patriot who did a presentation on drug abuse. He got addicted after a back injury to oxycodone and we would like to, to be able to, to use those funds, to bring in speakers and continue to fund student presentations.
I'd like to thank Ms. Callen for spearheading the Naviance work last year as the halftime guidance counselor this year as the Director of Guidance. Very pleased with, with the quality of the data and the number of responses, quite honestly. Looking at this data over time is really helpful, because you, I think it really does give you an honest read from students. One of the things that is, might be helpful to, to know is when the comments are coming from kids who are attending highly selective institutions versus, you know, selective institutions versus things that are more open enrollment. But there are some very interesting patterns about, you know, kids who are saying that they were well-prepared, talked about the value of the AP courses and the honors option and the, you know, the work and others. So I think there's, there's lots to learn and lots to look at from it and it's really important to, to keep that picture in mind of how the kids do when they leave.
One note on the independent study. There's a couple of policies that deal with bringing credit, because it's treated as an ELO.
Right, right. That's why we.
But I didn't see competencies mentioned anywhere in terms of the procedure. Typically, under an ELO, the student needs to identify the competencies that are approved by their advisor or instructor or whatever that, the right term is. Just to make sure that if we're gonna grant credit, we should make sure we're following that policy.
I know from my conversations with the high school admin team, one of the things they, one of the conversations they want to have with, with the board is really about GPA, what counts towards GPA. How can we offer students more extended opportunities, whether those be dual enrollment, where they go out to colleges, the way Zach Wagner did, for example, last year for his Count II. And under what circumstances do those experiences count towards GPA? That's a.
That's a discussion.
It's not an easy conversation, because almost every decision can cut both ways. But I think it's a conversation, as we're, we're trying to offer more experiences and ask kids to put more into those, their, their, you know, very high-end classes. You know, what's, what's the, the most appropriate way to address various types of courses, whether it's a V-Lax course that a student takes while they're a student here, whether it's, as I say, a high school dual enrollment that they're taking, or sorry, college dual enrollment at the college level, independent studies, those sorts of things. Even, even this own, you know, we do have two students taking Calculus BC as an independent study slash ELO. Because it's not on the books as a course here, that, under, under our existing situation, probably should not be counted against a student's GPA. But yet, it's gonna be a more rigorous course than AP Calculus. So how do we develop some guidelines and, and provide students and parents with those guidelines sufficiently in advance for them to make good decisions? sufficiently in advance for them to make good decisions?
Like, is it graded and tested like another class?
Yes. Ms. Angelini is a highly qualified teacher. She is, they are sitting through her class, and they're doing independent study with her. But according to our own policies, even though they would take a standardized test, they would grade them, and they would have a grade. But right now, because of our policies, it wouldn't-
One of the other things is, for example, I know some students who have taken, not taken AP Psychology, for example, but taken the AP exam, bought the book, taught themselves the course, wrote the exam, got a five, and the school didn't give them the credit for it. But yet, kids who take an AP Psych course and fail the exam get a credit.
Yeah, I think, I think this came to light last year with Zach Wagner, because he took a college course in math, because he was capable, and we, he received an A, but the credit, because of our policy, could not transfer back. So he ended up, you know, he was third in our class. If that A would have gone into his GPA, it could have changed things.
I mean, this, if you go under the ELO, there's some flexibility.
I just think we need to clarify a little bit more-
That's what we want clarity.
And the other thing is-
We want to be very clear.
I think as more of these high-end opportunities are available, it becomes more and more important to be dealing with guidance to parents and students at the middle school level, so that they, they know about honors options coming into high school, that they know about the opportunities for math acceleration, you know. I mean, if the kid is in grade eight now, I would like to think that they would be able to take AP Stats and AP Calc by the time they graduated from high school here. So knowing that ahead of time. If you don't know that there's something to take after geometry, then why would you even think about math acceleration?
And I, my understanding is, and Jody can correct me, is that you have to be very careful when you deal with GPAs, because when we started touring colleges, they were talking about GPAs, and two different people made a statement that you send your transcript in, but we go and look up how your school does GPA, and that's what it's based on. If that information's wrong, there's absolutely nothing an individual student can do. Whether it's wrong making it look higher or wrong, it makes it look, it makes it look lower, so-
It's calculated.
I didn't realize that this existed, but when we were in South Carolina, they said, yeah, we use a zero to a hundred GPA. So we have to take, we have to scale everybody down to the same thing, because I think they said North Carolina was a five or a six-
Right.
Is how they do their GPA and this, and so we get fifty states plus international students that calculate it fifty different ways, and they come up with a way that they feed the score in, and it comes out with an equalized GPA for everybody, so-
Yeah, that's true.
You have to make sure that everything's aligned.
Need a common core GPA.
US-wide.
You never get everybody to agree on that one.
That's absolutely true.
And Ryan, did you want to add to the conversation, since we're talking about high school, and now you've both said that you're in AP courses at this point in time, and-
I think this particular issue, I shouldn't really share my opinion. No, just be overt, no, it's just, yeah.
I mean, I have very little information about those, if I'm not, I don't take the, sorry, I was doing an AP course, I mean, I'm in AP classes, but I, I'm not in independent study, so I really have no information about those.
I'd like to clarify, I think that it definitely sounds like it's a class deserving of that credit. I only said that due to how close I am to both of those two in terms of GPA, that it would-
There's a race going on, it's very competitive right now.
But I do think that it sounds like a, like a course that is deserving of that.
You don't want to create a feeding frenzy, I don't think, around the valedictorian position.
You want people to take the course for the correct reasons.
For all the reasons.
That's right.
And it shouldn't be to, I have a niece, who's a junior, who's battling in New York at a school, and was contemplating taking a lesser class because of the rigors of a teacher whose philosophy is, these students have never failed, they need to taste-
Failure.
Failure.
Right, right.
So I told her she should take the class, and prove the teacher wrong. So we had quite a discussion over the summer about that. But I, but I do believe, you know, it is a process, I, you know, I don't know where it gets you in the future, it's something that you get when you're in high school, but I don't know that it has any lasting effect in your college years and things like that or after that. And I think the biggest key is these classes, that a student is stepping out and taking something that's more rigorous, whether it impacts their GPA or not, I think they're taking it for the right reasons, and is, you know, I don't know if we write a policy that rewards that process, because I think then we will begin to encourage that. But at the same time, we should have a policy that allows the students to be able to go and take these classes for no other reason than it'll move them further along in the completing their, their college, their college degree. And so I, you know, yes, that is a very-
Why didn't you just say yes, like five minutes ago?
So do they, like, a course like this, do they get credit for it and just on a grade? Do they still do the credit?
They get a grade, they get a grade, a grade will show up on their transcript. So like Zach-
But it might not be computed into the GPA.
That's what, that's exactly, that's exactly right.
And that's same as if a student took a VELAX class and received a nine.
Which is different, because it's not one of our qualified teachers.
That's right, that's, that's where the separation is.
So I can live with, you know, VELAX, I mean, it's a, it's a rigorous course, you know, but the difference is-
So does VELAX show up in their GPA?
No.
But it shows up as credit toward graduation.
Right.
Because we used it as credit, started out as credit.
And those are all policies we need to look at, you know, as we move forward.
There's a range of options. You can bring in some, a credit, but pass, fail, you can bring in, show the grade, but not count it towards the GPA, you can show the grade and count it towards the GPA.
So are-
So, I mean, it can be a landmine.
Yes, it can be a landmine.
I'm telling you, word average appears.
So are these policies that Campbell is going to undertake reviewing and bringing to the school board? Or are they-
That's where we're at. I think there's pretty good consensus around the notion that bringing it in as a credit with a grade is a good thing, and encourages students to take the rigorous courses that will allow them to learn, allow them to test themselves against more rigorous material, prepare them, and make them more marketable in a, in a, in a tough market. To me, the GPA issue is less important, because you don't want to have a student go and take that calc two class, or take that dual enrollment class, get a B minus, you know? So it, and have it, have to worry about it. We want them, I think, to be able to feel it, to go out and push themselves. So, I mean, there's plenty of room for a range of positions there that I think are all helpful. But if the notion is we want kids to take, you know, rigorous courses, and apply themselves, and learn how to learn, and become good students, and set themselves up for success later on, whatever that policy looks like, I think we've done a good job.
Well, is this, remember, we talked about creating a, you know, a twenty-eight credit, where graduates that reach that would have a different, you know, an honors type of graduating ceremony? And it could be, it doesn't have to be one person, heck, it could be, twenty percent of the, of the students could, could have that, and I would, I would probably encourage you to go more along those lines, because now you're including everybody having that opportunity to get to, and I think that's where the school board will begin the process under, you know, guidance in the process, whether, you know, it's four more credits, I mean, it means eight times four is, is thirty-two, and do we, is thirty-two too high, or, you know, I mean, in that process. So I think that's, that's where we begin, but I would say that's the conversation to have.
With the twenty-fourth now, you know, twenty-eight is a nice jump, four years, seven a year, twenty-eight credits, meet these requirements. You've already got the grant-a-state scholars, right? So you, if you add that distinction, so to, for a student in their senior year to take that extra honors class, to make, and finish with twenty-eight credits instead of twenty-seven or twenty-six, reward them for pushing themselves and doing the work.
Maybe twenty-eight with a three-oh or somehow try to-
I mean, I think that, but I think that, I think the board has had this discussion of-
Just not straight twenty-eight.
We would want to go that, so that I would encourage guidance and the administration here at Campbell, that if this is a vision you have, that the board has a similar vision, but I don't think they're in a position to step in and make the, the decisions that you guys will need to make that come to the board and say, here's how we think this program should work, and these are the reasons why, and then the board can ask their questions and, and get to a point where we can approve that process.
Typically, three, well, four components, a credit requirement, a GPA requirement, sometimes a service learning requirement, and sometimes a behavior requirement.
Maybe we should add a writing requirement after a-
For example, in your junior or senior years, have a class, whatever, offense or be suspended from school. I've flown with this, well, when I was, when I was there, I was really good, and the rest of the time, I, so, you know.
Independent.
At the same point in time, you don't want a kid who's a, who really wasn't a great student at a freshman, but finishes and meets those criteria-
Yeah, make a mistake.
And has two excellent, an excellent junior year, that's a fabulous success story. So you don't want to not allow that. So what sort of criteria do you want? How do you set it up? And then the harder part is, how do you phase it in? Because when you, when you announce it, the seniors want to be eligible for this distinction, but not everybody knew it was there, so how do you phase it in?
So is this something we should expect back on our agenda in March, April? Or is this something, I mean, is this something that you would want to try to put in place for next school year? I mean, I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the discussion, and, and so I think we will continue to work, and when we come back, we'll have more.
If you have any questions about which policy you may need to interact with, ask Mr. Miller, because he is a policy guru.
We know that there's a lot of policies, there's three.
That's totally under the heading, no good data.
And we've seen this coming for a while, because as we increase with ELOs and extended, you know, opportunities, we have to look at the policy that has the number of credits coming back. And so we know that we have a lot, we need to make some changes, or at least ask for some changes.
You were here for the whole AP honors credit discussion, I was going to say fiasco, but when we went from just a point three and a point five-
I think that was the year I came on board.
That was crazy.
It was point five to one point oh, and there was a lot of angst about-
A lot of discussion.
Valedictorian, and people would have made different decisions had they known this, that an AP course was going to be worth a one-point bump versus just a half-point bump, and they had come in and had already recalculated that, you know, they would shift this way, oh my God, it was like, wow, we didn't, not trying to-
Didn't see that coming.
Which is why we deferred it to, it's going to be this graduating class as the first one with that new-
Right, so you got to have the blinker before the turn, sort of thing, so we grandfathered, you know, we grandfathered people, so we literally were calculating GPAs different ways for different classes.
And, and who knows what will happen, but, but, but again, I, again, I think that if you can distinguish a group of students as honor students, whether they're-
No, I think that's where we want to go.
Is, is the way to go, and, and, you know, you know, there's always people wearing different robes or hats and something at, at graduation, and that can be a way that they're honored and distinguished is by whatever they're-
Well, you already seat the top ten differently than the rest of the class, right?
We do, we don't do top ten anymore. We go by GPA, and that's when we go do the honors dinner, and the students are able to pick a teacher to represent them. And last year, we did it a little bit differently, we also had the student talk about the teacher that they chose to, to represent them. It's a wonderful evening, but it goes by a number versus ten, because a lot of times it would be ten and eleven, even last year, when, when it went one, two, three, between two and three wasn't even a full point. I mean, I had them calculate it five times, because I was sick to my stomach, because it wasn't even a whole point, you know? But it is what it is, and, and, you know, but wow, scary stuff.
That event's still my favorite event of the year, too, the, the honors award banquet.
Yeah, yeah.
Were we changing that this year, too? Were we raising, it was three point seven five, are we raising it now that?
National Honor Society, no, we're going to keep the three point seven five. National Honor Society, we just bumped up National Honor Society this year, they want to bump it again, because they want to keep making it more rigorous. So again, we're doing it in steps, so people know when they come in what it looks like. So this year's freshmen, when they came in, they were said, this is what the GPA is for national, to even be considered. So we already moved in that direction.
So this year, even though there's a bump in AP and honors over last year, the same GPA will get you to the awards?
Yes, yes.
So it's going to be more people?
It's going to be twice as long.
Twice as long. It'll be twice as good.
It'll be twice as good.
You're going to have to serve three courses.
You're going to have to play faster music.
We'll see when we get there, you know.
Well, the statistic was, the top sixty-three students in the class of 2014 have a three-point oh or better GPA, which is more than the top fifty percent. It's literally, it's top sixty percent have a three-point oh or better. It's remarkable.
It's remarkable, and then, but then we have the other end, where we have the struggling students, and, you know, we, you know, also spend a lot of time trying to figure out, you know, what's going on and how we can meet their needs. So we're happy, we just have to-
Can I ask a question? Could I ask Dr. Cockman earlier, and he said he'd get me the answer, but you probably have it. What's a GPA right now in the school?
Of the entire school?
Average GPA? That I don't have.
That she doesn't have. We could figure that out, though. If you wait till the semester, because, you know, so you'll, yeah.
I told him, I was told two point five, two point seven, but-
What we do, at the end of every semester, is we pull all courses, and we do a course average, and we look at that data, so, you know, like, if the course average for one class might be a C, and for another class it might be, and we start to compare, and that's all data that we look for at the leadership team, and we just discuss it, and then the curriculum facilitators go back and discuss with their departments, and, you know, this is just informational, you know, but, you know, what's going on here, or good or bad.
You want the whole school or the whole grade?
The whole school.
Well, both, actually. I'm just curious, like-
By grade and then by school?
Yeah, and we can have that for you at the, at the end of the semester, because we have to wait for a semester to close.
No, not, sorry, I was talking to myself. I thought the different grades were weighted differently, but now they're not, since my class is the first one to have that.
It's easier for us now, because they were weighted differently.
Any more questions for the high school? Thank you, this is great, this, this information's awesome. Before we go through it again.
I can say NAVIANCE gets used a lot by seniors.
Yeah, NAVIANCE does, it's been a great program. The only question I have is, are, is all the school board members on Blackboard connect as well?
I don't think so.
So if the Blackboard message goes out, the school board is not-
Well, that's, Blackboard is what-
It's like the alert now.
We're alert now, yeah.
Now, used to be. So if you have somebody in the-
I don't get anything from Campbell.
Oh, yeah, so maybe-
So do you need to be on that?
Because I send out every Monday, I send out an email.
I think you should add to the school board, yeah.
Oh, you may just have to forward it to school board, or ask somebody to.
Because I get, I get it wherever you guys send out your two schools.
Is that information that you would want received?
Oh, I think any information that you're sending out, that's, you know, going out is-
Yeah, I sent out a blanket.
That you're sending out blanket to parents and students?
Yes.
Out of guidance or ministry?
Yeah.
Then, yeah, I think that, I mean, we get, we get things that come from Dr. Cockburn on stuff that's occurring, but-
Okay.
But I think that, you know, I think the guidance, I think the school boards have talked a few times on the guidance at Campbell that changes and things like that, and I think that we're encouraged by the direction it's headed, so.
I do send out weekly, every Monday, I send out an email to all parents and staff, just letting them know what's coming up for the next week, so they, they're aware ahead of time if we have college rep visits or whatever's on the agenda. So if you want to be included in that, I can start doing that as well.
Say, what's one more email in my life?
No, it's not, it's just, it's one more checkmark.
And we do the same thing on Mondays, we do the Cougar update, which is just, what are the events, what's happening, shout-outs, if you would like those.
Just plan your June events, like the dinners and stuff. If you can, if you can-
It gets crazy.
Let the school board know about those things earlier than May.
Okay, we can.
Because our schedule fills so quickly.
Yeah, it gets a little bit.
Especially with these two schools, you know, when you've got kids in them, they're pulling you in all directions, they're May, June.
Yes?
It's got red lights and blue lights flashing.
It's about to shoot.
Fan is on.
It's about to shoot Laura right now. It's about to shoot Laura right in the eye, I bet.
It is.
She doesn't know it.
I can see the head.
Do you want us to leave?
You want us to leave?
Wow, that's a long question. Move or leave?
Thank you all posted, much appreciated. Scott, if you want to stay for this, because it's part of the rationale.
Yes.
What is this?
There's a very scintillating impact fee discussion coming up.
So this is a short, Brian and Leah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a very short, well, by my standards, anyway, video, PowerPoint slide that I would like to show to the budget committee that gives a rationale for kind of where we're going in technology, because we don't have our five-year plan ready, and part of the rationale for the GMS halftime position. So leveraging technology to support college and career readiness. I don't know if I showed you this slide before. It's actually relatively old data, but the trend lines still are valid, which of the following categories is skill that's disappearing from the workplace most rapidly? Is it routine manual, expert thinking, routine cognitive, non-routine manual, or complex communication?
Oh, is this a guess?
Yeah. Which is the purply pink line, and which is the orange line? And the answer is.
Purple, let me say, complex communication.
The answer is, what's disappearing from the workplace most rapidly is actually routine cognitive, which is a surprise to some folks.
Oh, it's the opposite, then?
Yeah.
So the stuff is going up as gaining in place?
So the left-hand category, that's a percent change increase or decrease. So the greatest increase has been in complex communication and expert thinking. And while routine and non-routine manual have dropped, routine cognitive has dropped more than any other category. And when you think of it, that makes sense. The data is from 70 to 2,000, roughly, and since then, those trends have continued. If you think of the routine cognitive tasks that we now do with computers, there was a time, if you went to a hotel and you wanted to check out, you had to stand there for five minutes while the accountant's in the back did up all the adding and presented you with the bill, and leave the building, and they send you an email. I mean, it's just automatic, so.
Brian, I just a question on the chart?
I'm sorry?
If you can go back just for one second? So if you're looking at the purple line, so from 69 to 79, it went up 4 percent. Is 79 to 89, is it 10 percent over 79 or 10 percent?
No, it's 10 off the, from the baseline.
Off the base, okay.
So if you think of the traditional pyramid of jobs, there's a few really good jobs, and then, you know, a lot of jobs down the bottom, that really is an industrial model, and that really has gone away, and the jobs in the middle have almost shrunk, and the job market is more of a dumbbell now. You've got a bunch of jobs here, a bunch of jobs here, and a bunch of jobs down here is a much bigger end of the dumbbell. That's shrinking in the middle. So here's a couple things. So you've got global competitiveness, you've got outsourcing, and increase of technology. Those tasks, relatively low-skill tasks, are disappearing at a tremendous rate. A study in the UK looked at the number of low-skill jobs that are being lost on a per-day basis, and then extrapolated for the US economy. And the research indicated about, the estimate is 2,500 low-skill jobs lost every day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So, you know, kids who are in school now, what's the world that they're going to emerge into, and what is the skill that they need? This is actual data from the US on, if you look at the first part, the recession from 2000 and late '07, December 2007 until February 2012. The green is people with a bachelor's degree or better, the red is associate's degree or some college, and the blue is high school or less. And what it says is, those with high school diplomas or less lost 5.6 million jobs in the recession, and then lost another quarter of a million jobs in the recovery.
I'd say that little bump you're looking at there is.
The last slide?
A R R A, no, that's. All the shovel-ready jobs were all construction that lasted for a year or whatever, and then, because they were funded by pure government money, they, the jobs were there, came in, and then went away.
The red, some college or an associate's degree, basically, they're back to status quo. And if you look at the green, bachelor's degrees or better, they actually gained almost 200,000 jobs during the recession, and have added another 2 million jobs in the recovery. So if you think of what sort of world we're preparing those kids for, this is a quote that actually, one of the surprising things about this quote is that it's 15 years old.
You know, it's interesting, this quote, when I was reading through the surveys, we need to teach people how to think, not how to memorize facts, and that's basically what that says is, if you teach somebody, it's the whole, you know, we teach somebody to fish, you know, you give them a fish to eat for a day, you teach them how to fish, eat for a lifetime.
Except for math facts, you need to know your math facts, then you need to know how to think.
Here's the Smarter Balance math claims. Explain, apply, concepts, interpret, carry out procedures with precision and fluency, solve a range of complex problems, clearly and precisely construct viable arguments. Those will be, those will be the four things that they report out for kids in grade three and four. All the way through. Those are the four scales that they'll report out. Claim one, claim two, claim three, claim four. English Language Arts. More of a focus, as we know, on technical reading and writing, but engage in research slash inquiry. You know, we're talking, all three schools talked about the performance assessments, and the feedback from the high school folks was, you know, more writing and more research, more pressure. So this is actually my list. Higher expectations for all, for student learning, more independent learning, and that's becoming a national and international piece. But the development of digital literacy layered on top of strong traditional literacy and numeracy skills. That basic fundamental math and reading and writing piece isn't replaced by technology skills. It has to, the technology skills have to overlay that.
That's a big challenge in today's world, with text messaging and email. Some of the emails I get from people, I'm astounded at.
This is, Smarter Balance will have performance assessment.
Present company excluded.
Right.
This is an example of a computer adaptive test, which Smarter Balance, most of it will be. So you take the first question, and it's at your grade level. If you get it right, you get a harder question. If you get that right, you get a harder question. Normally, you'd have all seven of those questions that every student would get, and we'd try to figure it out. So the reality is, if you, another student comes in, gets the first question wrong, they get an easier question, and so it's about finding that student's level in this learning progression faster. So it actually requires fewer questions, and because we can't ask every kid every question, we actually get better information about all the kids. Kneecap, for example, most of the points are all around proficient or just above or below. If a kid is well above or well below, we really don't have that much data about it, about that kid, because the questions are either way too hard or way too easy for most of them. So if you look at what's going to be required, well, grade threes and fours are going to be expected to write an on-demand full-page essay, responding to text. And in some cases, you've got a split screen, or a screen that you press a button, and it goes away, and you're going to have to move back and forth between the text and scroll up and down pages of the text while you're responding. You will have to go on and use a highlighter, and not pick A, B, C, D, but it'll be highlight the four areas of the text, and so I'll show you some of those questions. But basically, kids are going to have to be able to interface with electronic devices in a variety of ways on the assessment. I'm not telling you that we should be doing this because of the assessment, I'm telling you, that's what good learning looks like, and the context that you assess in, and the context that you learn in should look as similar as possible. So this is actual, the language from the Smarter Balance website. Draw a line on the page, draw a shape, all right? Draw a triangle or rectangle with a specific area perimeter, rearrange the order of things, categorize, drag and drop. Sorry about that. And so here's a typical selected response item. So which number is both a factor of 100 and a multiple of 5? So the student has to go, well, okay, there's your stem. 50 is the correct answer, it's both a factor of 100 and a multiple of 5. You have three distractors, incorrect answers, but they're not just wrong answers, they should be the three most common mistakes, or the two, the three most misconceptions that are frequently made. And so not only do you know that they don't know the right answer, but you know what error they made, and that gives you more useful information. But in the end, you just have to pick A, B, C, or D. And even if you do it electronically, you just click a little button, and you're done. These are sample questions from early in the Smarter Balance piece. You've got a, this is grade four, if you can see from the top right-hand corner, right? You've got an embedded calculator with a delete button. The kids will have, just assume that they know how to do that. Assume that they know how to put a cursor in and enter with the keyboard, and then input the question in the bottom. Question on the left is a gradient math problem. The transformation is applied to ABC, triangle ABC, to transform it to DEF. And then DEF, which isn't shown, applies another transformation to form GHJ. Just draw the triangle electronically on the computer screen, and that's what it looks like. So you have a reflection of both the x-axis, and then a dilation, which multiplies that two and a half times while remaining, keeping its relationship to the origin. The student can't draw it, even if they know what it is, they can't get the answer right.
I knew that, I swear.
On the right, this is just a drag and drop. You click on it, you drag it, you drop it in. By the way, that's an incorrect answer, because at 3 and 5 eighths pounds, there is no combination of 3 and 5 eighths pounds, it gives you an answer between 5 and 6 and 7 pounds. Top left-hand corner, Gregor's installing a rectangular tile floor, so they have to drag and drop this shape in, do the calculations, and then put it in. The one on the bottom left, they actually have to do that reflection. The top right-hand side, grade four question, draw a line of symmetry. Not which of these has this correct line drawn, draw it. Here, drag and drop each of those to the correct place on the number line. That's a grade seven item, because it uses compound fractions. Use of an online protractor. You click here, you point it, you rotate it, and then you take your reading. The one on the left is a reading question. Highlight the parts of the text and provide evidence to support the evidence that the Tuskegee Airmen were historically significant. You only get a 2 out of 2 if you highlight all four of the pieces of information. Anything less than 4 out of 4, you get partial score. Top right, grade four question. Five friends ordered three large sandwiches, four students ate so many fourths, how much sandwich is left for Oscar? With a calculator there, so they have to change the fractions to decimals using the online embedded calculator. That's grade four. Now, the one on the bottom is actually a bias question that I threw in there. And it says, different states have different sales tax rates. Three states have online calculators to compute the sales tax. So you put in the price, it tells you what the tax is, and then you have to drag and drop calculator A, B, and C into the right cutter. So this is a bias question, because the poor New Hampshire kids will be totally confused.
Zero.
It is, it's an invalid question, because they're going to know, what's a sales tax? They misspelled sail on the boat. There's a drag and drop that is just. There's a high school question on the left, which is actually, it's a pretty straightforward question, but there's some flexibility in the interactions. Two water tanks are shown, so you basically click on a height over on this tank, and the amount of water flows, but they're not, they're different shapes, and if you notice, the scales are different. 10 isn't 10, height of 10 on one is not the same as the other. So you click, the water flows, now you have to figure out the radius, round it to the nearest whole number, and then drag that number into the little box. So those are assessment items. What's on the right is a tool from the National Council of Teachers of Math, the Illuminations website, where you have a series of questions that you can ask. So kids will go on, and they go, I want to increase the length, decrease the length, you know, so, and then they're looking at the relationship between the table that's built, the rectangle, and the number of chairs. Well, there's a whole series of questions that you can build on this as an inquiry activity and so on. So there's just an assumption in the learning on the right and in the assessment on the left, that you know how to interact with the technology. This is an online spinner, where you can go in, and you can say, well, how many areas do I want? Right? It's 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, and then I can go in and click and change the size of each one of these, and it'll tell me what the actual percentage of the circle is, and then I can just start clicking on trials and see if the random experimental results reflect the piece that I made. So again, this is a probability piece, it can be done at very low grade levels, but the expectation is, the kids are going to be learning a lot of stuff independently. They're going to be interacting with computer interfaces. And if we want students who are going to be able to take this for granted, they need a different education in elementary. That's going to, that's going to set the foundation. My granddaughter is six, she's doing fabulous in grade one, she is a whiz with her iPad. You give her any of these, and she would be so stumped it isn't funny, because she doesn't know what a cursor is. She doesn't know, never used a mouse in her life.
You max.
Clearly you bought her the wrong tool.
Not me, my son, but he works at Best Buy, so.
So that's not what I want. I don't want. I see one of the questions from the budget committee is going to be, even if we didn't adopt Common Core, smarter balance is required by the state of New Hampshire.
Correct.
So regardless of what we agree to, all of our students are required to take this in order to receive state funding.
This is another website that looks at gear ratios.
Power-up.
You actually, you set up the gear ratio, it gives you the readout in the gear ratio up top, it actually shows you how far the bike moves as you move the pedal around, and then you have to draw conclusions based on that. And that's just a learning piece, it's not an assessment piece. Now, when we talked about layering technology on over rigorous English, up top, you have an excerpt from Susan B. Anthony's speech that she wrote in 1872 after she was arrested after attempting to vote in the 1872 presidential election. So here's her speech that makes an argument for women's suffrage. Below, the second passage, is from John Locke's Second Treatise on Government, published in 1690. So here's the two-part task. Identify the main idea of each passage and explain how Locke's treatise supports Anthony's argument. That's sophisticated. It's not what's the right answer in analyzing this poem. It's here's a poem, analyze it. It's a totally different task from what we were doing 20 years ago. And hopefully, we're at a different place now. Here's a grade eight math design. I think this, they designed this based on Litchfield. So you have an area, you have three pathways, you've got, you're going to have to use Pythagorean theorem to figure out the length of one of those pathways. You've got a six-step process that's down below, right? The performance assessment on the left. Remember, grade eight math. Here's the criteria, three benches, a light, da-da-da-da-da. So task one, determine the total cost of each bid. And the bids come in with different information. So you have to figure out what's the total cost of each of the three bids, given the specifications, and determine which is the best deal.
Gold-plated bathrooms.
You do a survey.
It's at Derek's house.
You do a survey of the community. I think I saw this on the town website. And then use the information, right? And the estimated cost to design a park that meets the following criteria. And by the way, you can't develop any more than 45% of the land.
I think they used that when they put, I think they did that when they put the rocks in over there at Solna.
I think it was written by, the question was written by a Democrat because the first bullet says, you should spend as close as you can to the limit. I don't know. But again, when they draw their map, they're having to interface with this. This is a Smarter Balance sample question. They have to, and it's going to be scored automatically. And they're going to have to create the shapes using this tool online, grade eight math. There's a grade 11 performance task in writing. You're the chief of staff of your local Congresswoman. Somebody's announcing that they want to put up a nuclear power plant in your state. You click the button, up comes a rigged Google printout.
This is when I called Leah.
And then what you have to do is you have to go in and answer the questions. Evaluate the credibility of the arguments, the evidence, right? Which of the sources are more trustworthy and why? Okay? Which of them warrants some skepticism because of either bias or insufficient evidence? So it's not hit it in a Google and copy it. It's what's this information saying? What's the credibility? What's the potential source of bias? Then you have to summarize it and then write an argumentative report. That's an actual grade 11 performance task.
Number two is wrong. It's not due to an emergency because they never make a decision. The congressman will not be available to read. Don't pin me down on nuclear power.
So when you think of where the kids who are currently in grade two and three this year, what education is going to look like by the time they finish? I know we talked about keyboarding as an important skill, but the ability to use one of these things, we've all got one in front of us, right? For learning purposes, not just for entertainment or, you know, is crucial. And so if you think of the comment about this, this technology capability has to be layered on top of the reading and the writing and the math already. We will have two fewer classes at GMS. We could ask the music teacher to teach this and the art teacher to teach it and the phys ed teacher because they have two fewer classes. They don't have the skill set and the background. We could ask our grade three and four teachers to teach this, but they're already busy teaching reading, writing, math, some social studies and science when they get a chance. So do you want to take away from that foundational piece in order to take time to teach the technology? I mean, to me, a halftime position to support this, to give these kids the foundation, and then as they move up, build that capacity with them in a cost-effective way is the only way we're going to get these kids where they need to be. I mean, we should be seeing by the time these guys hit high school, much more independent-driven learning.
I'm sold. Good luck next week.
Tomorrow night?
I was going to say.
I think, I think we need to provide a rationale that shows that this is an investment in quality education and investment that is worth it. And what happens with the argument happens, but I think, I think it's an argument that we have to make. So I just want to share with you that's what I, I mean, we talked about it, and I gave a little five-minute spiel on why I supported it, but I think this does a better job.
Before we go argue this with the budget committee, we've got to get the school board to agree because right now, the school board doesn't agree on this position.
Well, it went in.
Three people agreed at one point.
It went in. It was voted in the budget.
Voted in the budget?
Yeah, it's there.
It's there.
3-2.
But it didn't go in as a, as a reclassification of a position. It went as a new position, which is going to create all the anxiety at the budget level.
Doesn't matter how you classify it.
Yeah, I don't think it's classified at all.
Guys, we've.
I tried.
We didn't say it was a new position or it was reclassified.
Yes, we did. Actually, if you go back and read, yes, we did. We cut.
We cut the.
The other position and then said, we're adding this position.
Oh.
That's what we did.
All right. Well, that's your argument right there that's going to go with.
That's definitely.
And that's why I'm saying that, that we have changed positions and of other employees of why they're going to teach and what they're going to teach. And when we walked the path we did, right or wrong, it was the path we went.
Well, I would argue that we have moved people from position to position.
But, and they've taught different things.
We've never said, we're not going to fill this position and transfer the money to this other position.
Okay, we take a teacher from a second grade to a fifth grade. What's the difference from taking a teacher that used to teach second grade, now they're going to teach halftime computer science because that's their background?
Same employee.
But that's not an option because we don't know that same employee could do that because the position is no longer there. So that's where our dilemma is.
But no one says you can't judge them all in one person to get there either.
It's true. I just am telling you the argument that we're going to have.
I suspect this is not the end of the discussion.
So, you know, if you ever saw the movie Taken, good luck.
I would have, it would have been much easier the other way, but, you know.
Any feedback that you have about the general, knowing what the intent of the PowerPoint is, if you have any suggestions for improvements, please, I mean, other than the fact that the screen should have been four times bigger so people would actually read it.
When, first Smarter Balance is spring of 15, correct?
Yes.
Yes. By the way, I do have some, some feedback from grade three and four students who took Smarter Balance on screens that were too small or kids that had no technology background. In some cases, they were so frustrated that they had to stop the testing because the kids were crying. Not whole groups of them, but kids in there who were not tech savvy. Kids, it was such a frustrating experience for them that not only did they get nothing valid on the assessment, it was a horrible experience for the kid. In one case, it was iPads. Too small a screen, yet by the time the, you know, if they didn't, they didn't have a keyboard. And so by the time they put the space in, you couldn't see what you were typing and it was, and so we're looking forward to the tests for all three schools. All three schools are doing a small, limited test. The other thing that we've heard from a lot of the districts is that the proctoring is very hands-on. Anything else, Julie, that you remember from those sessions?
Back to the iPads. Some of it had to do with pop-ups or flashes or, I mean, there's videos that are going to be shown. There's multiple things that come up sometimes at different intervals. It's really, the intent seems to be that, one, it's interactive, which could be both motivational, but also complex, you know, when you have two passages to read and you have to scroll. When it says, you know, that example that said compare two pieces of text, kids are naturally going to go back to them and double-check and, oh, what, you know, the evidence is. And it just has to be efficient and user-friendly, however you do it. And they have to do it often. One of the things that we have to do after, I don't know if it's going to be this spring or into next year, but once the teachers understand what we're teaching, what the curriculum frameworks are asking them to convey to kids, then it's creating local assessments that mirror these. That's a real challenging task. One of the things that they talk about in performance assessment, but it's true of all assessment, is most pre-service, you know, before teachers or teachers, there are no courses in designing assessments or understanding what a really strong formative assessment is or a summative assessment. A lot of that is on-the-job training. Kids learn, kids learn from their mental teachers, who may or may not know how to do that really well. The competency-based assessments that high schools required to have by law, that, for some people, it came more naturally than others. Sometimes we continue to struggle with what a good assessment is. Takes a lot of time to collaborate and to tune it and to run it and evaluate it and revise it over and over again. So that's a major piece of this whole process.
So for districts that don't have technology, what do they do?
They have three years to, to be able to transition because you can do it somehow on paper.
Except that.
Interactive way in.
I mean, this, this is verging on a 28A item. They're requiring this test and not funding the district's capability, whether it's a technology piece of hardware aspect or potentially a skill that isn't part of a curriculum.
Well, this is part of the argument with the Common Core.
Well, on the other hand, we are, we are supposed to under adequacy have that ICT portfolio, which would have the students already demonstrating most of these skills.
But, but I would argue the stuff that you're doing here, you don't do in everyday If they, if they put up Word and said, start writing, I'd agree that's a skill that's taught and expected to be known. Some of the things that were on there, I think, are not.
Yeah, there's a problem where they ask about area. It's a desk that's in an L shape, and they said, make two desks out of it. Besides the area part, you click on a tool and the prompt is, draw a line separating the two desks. Now, you could do it this way or, you know. So what does that have to do with the math problem that you have to figure out where that tool is on the toolbar? Take your mouse, click, hold, drag, and I don't even know because the sample wouldn't allow me to do it. It just showed it. So I don't know how easy or hard it is, but there are multiple steps there. They really have nothing to do with the mathematics.
Using a Java applet.
Yeah. And maybe in drafting or something like that, you might use some, that's the only application I can think of, or drawing of some kind.
That's some of the things that I've heard against Common Core as well.
That's got nothing, I have to tell you, that has nothing to do with Common Core, and it's all about.
Well, I think it's worth a testing.
It's all about the assessment.
That's what I've been hearing a lot of.
Well, but they were pretty clear when we went to the presentation in Bedford that no matter what curriculum you do, this is the test. So you can design whatever curriculum you want to design, like Manchester's doing or anybody, and some of the other states. You can do whatever you want to do, but the state of New Hampshire has said, or the Department of Education, or some bureaucrat somewhere has said, we're going to use the Smarter Balance test. That's the statewide assessment.
Well, the U.S. Department of Ed says you will have a statewide assessment as part of your accountability under No Child Left Behind. And even under the waiver, even though you could have more than one measure, one of them has to be a state assessment. And the only choices out there were either design your own or park or Smarter Balance.
We could always be the strong-willed town that stands up to everybody and says, we don't want your money and we'll teach a school we want, and the taxpayers will fund everything, as they do fund everything anyway.
I'm just pointing out that that, those are some of the arguments against Common Core that I have been seeing. And I actually, that webinar, webinar?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, webinar tomorrow.
I, I'm hoping I can get home in time to.
Listen in.
Listening on that because I would like to hear.
I mean, they were, they were pretty adamant that you can, you can do whatever, teach whatever you want to teach, develop whatever curriculum, but this is going to be the test that you have to do. And I would argue that that test does not satisfy state law, just like NECAP does not satisfy state law, as what the, what the legislature's defined as the statewide assessment shall Because nowhere does a test of social studies or any of the other seven topics or.
Oh, it's very, it's very frustrating. I mean, you know.
If you think of adequacy, which really funds less than 35% of local education, that adequacy money is supposed to allow you to do all of these things.
One of the other things regarding technology that we, I was going to put it on my report, but I decided there was enough there, is the whole issue of digital text. You know, whether it's a textbook or a workbook or individual pieces of text or kids having individual units or you go into a classroom that uses units. I mean, how long are they going to make paper? And some of the math, you know, the pilots that I was talking about, one of the programs is called Digits out of Pearson, and that's totally digital, and there are places that are doing it, of course. They have resources other than what we have or more state funding or whatever. But at some point, we probably need to address that issue.
What's that?
I think so. See you around noon tomorrow. There's Mr. Super.
Yeah.
Impact request. You guys will sit. Thank you.
Scott, any additional feedback would be greatly appreciated on the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Yes? Mr. Cooper, likewise? Any, any feedback on the PowerPoint would be greatly appreciated.
Future.
I'll send it to you so you can actually read it before 6 o'clock tomorrow.
Is that AM?
I think I'll still be, I won't.
The impact request has to be approved by the board based on a conversation that Mr. York had last evening with John Brunel. It would appear that this, this version, which has probably 50% more detail than the first one, will be insufficient from what the board has selected on the one. They don't want make and model, but they want a lot more about numbers of items and...
Well, they want us to be, they want us to be able to, basically, there's a couple of things that we need to do. Firstly, the school board needs to decide whether they want to move forward with the process. If they do want to move forward with the process, then we could do a couple of recommendations. We can provide Jason and, Jason Oak and John Brunel with our preliminary documentation and stuff that we have, and they'll read through it and say, okay, this is, you need more information here and here, and they'll provide that to us. And then they want us to come at some point in time and actually share with them the rationale behind the process. And, and then they'll take it under advisement. And, and I, and I think that, you know, the conversation is, is that, you know, the, the logic behind it is that the world has changed. Our schools need more security. We need more ability to communicate through the process. We now have grown the infrastructure and the capability in the schools to be able to begin the processes doing those things. And, and they, you know, they'll decide and, and take a vote of whether or not they agree with, with the rationale that we have. And if they agree, then they'll move it to a vote or they'll ask their attorneys, you know, what they're thinking and why they're thinking that way, and they'll go from there. I don't think we, I don't think we, I don't think we missed anything on this. I know that we had had a conversation a few weeks ago, Dr. Cocker and I, and we were sort of looking to pull back. And then when I talked to John about it, he says that the selectmen were anticipating and receiving, and that we should not do that. So that's sort of where we're at.
Based on the email exchange, my recommendation, if the board is interested in moving forward with this, would be to have Frank and/or I meet with Jason Oak and John Brunel, find out what more they would like to see, have that document and bring that document formally. out what more they would like to see, have that document and bring that document formally to the board, that more detailed document. And then, we'll put it on to the next selectment meeting after that.
Before you guys put a ton of work into detailing it, could they at least give us a, is there any chance of them approving this?
That's John Santos. I mean, I think that, my understanding from this is, we should have the detailed information because we hired, or we had somebody come in and give it, give the detailed information. So, we should have that information, we just don't have it where we've put it in, in writing. But we should be able to attach to the document that we have here, the detailed description of the three schools and what the consultant had recommended. We do. I mean, I can't believe he just gave us a number of $200,000 and said, "That'll handle it, and we'll figure out the details later." I would hope that he had counted his widgets and cameras and locks and doors and had given us that detailed number, but I've not seen it. And I don't know if it's, if you've seen it, Dr. Cochran.
And assuming, no. I've had conversations, but I've not seen it in writing. And assuming we got, you know, a majority vote to move forward with it, then it would be my strong preference that since it's something that was moved from the board, the school board, to the Board of Selectmen, that you see the finished document that goes through there.
I thought we were going to get some, another attorney's opinion on whether this is...
I emailed Gordon twice, and I still haven't received it.
He's rather wrapped up with... Not just ours, but in general. His firm handles quite a few of the districts, all the way up through middle of the state.
So, we have tried multiple tries. We can reach out to Gordon. We'll see him Monday.
For lengthy time.
Quick time. Optimistic.
Does that approach, we will still move forward with that, with getting Gordon's opinion.
But at least keep the process moving.
Does that approach of, you know, meeting with Jason and John on the town side, getting that fuller document back to you folks as soon as we can, and then discussion, vote, and if it's a favorable vote, then move it to the Board of Selectmen. Sound like a, the way to move forward?
Now, is this something that would become a warrant article to vote on, or this just is strictly through the selectmen?
It's up to the selectmen. They're the keepers of the money.
I think it's a really big stretch.
I think, I'm skeptical. I was very skeptical before last evening's conversations, so much so that, you know, I was going to say, "I'm not sure if it's worth it." But I think, I think it's at least, if the Chair says that he would, you know, like to see it, so they can take a look at its merits according to the criteria that you're using, then I think it's worth the time. And even if it doesn't go with it this way, the feedback might help us determine what sort of rationales will fit the criteria. Maybe there aren't, but I think it's worth a try.
I'd say just...
We've done nothing for the safety and security of the kids in an environment that has become increasing and hostile for adults and children in building.
I don't think, I don't, what you're using the money for is one thing. I don't think anybody's disputing that, just where you're getting the monies from. And I'm concerned that it could come back to haunt us.
Well, I still think it's important to get a second legal opinion.
Yeah.
Like you said, you still reach out to Gordon. I mean, before...
I'm very concerned.
Well, I think before, like, a large step is taken, then we have that second opinion.
I'm assuming we'll have the second legal opinion before the board would have to make a decision.
I would hope so, because I, I'm certainly not going to vote for it until I have some better assurance that this is...
Well, I can tell you, when you made that request, Michelle reached out to Gordon the very next day. So, this has been something that's been put on the back burner. And if we don't hear back from Gordon, we can see if there's someone else in the firm.
See, maybe Mike Elwell.
Or Diane.
Or Diane Gor.
Okay, yeah, I'd say for now, at least keep the process moving, but we won't approve it until we hear likewise. But put in as least amount of effort as possible, I would think, so we're not wasting a bunch of man-hours for something that isn't going to materialize. Warrant article review and development? I mean, does anyone?
I did not put the language on the website, because Frank and I just discussed it, and we, he wanted to get your direction first. I know that we usually put the budget as the first article, and we went back and forth about the teacher's contract article, because we don't know what's going to happen.
But I think if there's one, it has to be the second article.
It has to be the second article. And the other question that Dr. Cochran and I were talking about was replenishing the capital reserve.
I think that's a good idea.
By the way, in case you don't know, Frank, because of a family situation, was unavailable this evening. He does have a first, there's an email from Frank. He does have the first go-around of the default budget done. There are, I know you'll be amazed by this, but there are different ways of interpreting how the default budget is supposed to be arrived at, and he wants the boards, I know the Budget Committee is waiting for it, but he wants to have a conversation with the board, and was hoping to have that conversation tonight, so that will be moved to next Wednesday. I know it's later than the Budget Committee will want, but...
I don't think we usually get to him until the end of the month, anyway.
I'm sorry.
I don't think we usually give to him until the end of the month, anyway.
The budget, the default budget doesn't have anything to do with the Budget Committee, anyway.
Okay, we have the, so do you need guidance from us on...
Well, I think what we mainly wanted was confirmation from the board if they do want to, if you do want to replenish the capital reserve building maintenance fund.
Do you just want to at least have them put one together, and then when we review all the warrant articles, we can vote on it then, or?
Yeah, usually we have...
I mean, I have that language readily available, yeah. And I will have that for you next week.
Yeah. The same amount, it was $50,000 before, or the same amount?
The Budget Committee was supportive last time. There was just disagreement about whether we'd use the new law, or whether we'd use it a lump sum, and I found that language confusing. And I think it was actually the request of the Budget Committee that we went that way, and then they reversed their field a little bit, and came back saying that that wasn't a preference after we were kind of at the point of no return.
Let's not relive those moments. Except, let's not relive those moments.
Yeah, so...
Default budget isn't due till the budget hearing.
In January.
By law.
Yeah.
All right, enrollment projections, do we need to go over these, or can we skip right to them in public?
No, that was just FYI.
You guys have any questions now? I'm sure the Budget Committee will ask you then.
They asked us the last night. Yeah, I think we sent this out a couple of weeks ago, as an email.
Any questions on the manifest? Public input. Oh, no, seeing nobody.
Well, I wrote down, I wrote down eight minutes where we should go over or under.
Good evening, nobody from 11 Perry Court. I would suggest not leaving the default budget until the last minute. Fiasco happened in the past. It's much easier to get it out in front, in the public beforehand, so people can take a look at it. I'm going to close that door because there's a question. I heard quick about impact fees, and I agree that the world has changed, and I think you know my position, but I'm going to state it again. Impact, this school does need some work done, but that's not the role of impact fees. That's the role of the operating budget and/or warrant articles. I happen to believe, if you word it in that way, that, and I wrote it right here, "For the safety and security of our kids, that warrant article it passes, rather than go after impact fees, which was not designed for and will be challenged, if not only in this room by people that sit in this room, but elsewhere, because it's not the correct way that impact fee law was designed and will fail." So, I, you know, all I want is for my kids to be safe, so, you know, please, if they need to be safe and secure, let's do it correctly so that we can absolutely do it and not waste time doing it the wrong way. Heard a few things tonight, like no resources. John asked a very good question about resources, or about Manchester, is discussing Common Core and Manchester doing their own thing, and the answer was, you know, "We don't really have those resources." The thing is, is they already exist. Those things exist, right down south of the border of Massachusetts. They're there. There's no resources involved. You ask for a copy, and educators like to share things. They'll give you what they got, they're on the website. So, it costs nothing to do stuff like that. Massachusetts, interestingly enough, this week, has decided, "We're going to put a two-year moratorium on implementing Common Core." Even though that Arnie Duncan is saying, "You're going to use one of these tests," they just pushed back, and they're not going to do it for two years because Massachusetts ranks amongst the best in the world. Why do they want to upset that apple cart? And people are coming around to that, and so the legislature and the Department of Education down there has pushed back. The reason New Hampshire isn't doing anything about it is because, quite honestly, everybody's school boards aren't screaming bloody murder. It starts right here. If school boards, towns, school boards were pushing back, the Department of Ed would, might have more pause in what they're doing. The problem is, nobody's screaming back at them, okay? And I really, really would hope that you guys are going to get on that call tomorrow night, just so you understand what it is that these folks are, and it's not just a handful of folks, it's nationwide, right? So, we, in this little town, we should be ahead of the curve and not behind it, right? We have the resources here in this town, we have people that are dedicated in this town to education, let's get ahead of that curve. Because I don't believe, I don't, and it's not because anybody's nefarious, but there's no stages involved, like Common Core's the next stage. I heard that we don't like to follow policy sometimes because it's hard, right? We have a policy, and we chose to kind of go, policy is good, but it's also time-consuming, is the exact comment. Well, so is curriculum development. And again, this has nothing to do with Dr. Hion, she's fabulous, you know, I said only per committee. I see what she does, she works hard, and it is time-consuming. So, what are the odds are that this is a stepping stone? And if it is, does a company's, I've not been around companies that do that. You don't go buy technology that's already outdated, right, or wrong, you go buy everything you can afford, right? Common Core is not something that I think we should afford. If we're going to give our kids the best, go get the best. Why waste our time in the middle somewhere? Because, John, I know you're a big proponent of math, right? You know, we've come, we've come to this understanding that math is important to us. Well, the gentleman, the professional, Dr., Professor Milgram, who was the guy on the Core, on the Common Core Committee, is saying that this is not the correct way to do it. Here it is, this is him, okay? "Common Core standard math ends the curriculum after Algebra II. It includes no standard for pre-calculus or for getting to pre-calculus from weak Algebra II standards." What you have is, let's see, and from this week, and only one of every 50 prospective STEM majors, when they begin undergrad math coursework in pre-calc or lower, will ever earn a BS in STEM, in a STEM area. And Common Core does not address any of that because it stops at Algebra II. This is dumbing down, it's not going up. I understand it's better than what we have, but I'm advocating for better and greater. And lastly, when I was at a percommittee meeting, a parent was speaking about the honors program we have here. I don't have any kids that do that, so I'm not speaking of firsthand experience, but I believe Trish was there that day. Her firsthand experience was that the honors program here was just basically the same stuff, but more of it, rather than something that's more challenging, which to me is a concern, you know? More work is not necessarily more challenging, it just means you're tied down longer. It doesn't mean it gives you any better rigor, right? Buzzword. Anyway, have a good night. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry. I didn't know, I sent, I sent, I'm sorry, I sent an email for correspondence, and I know you referred to it earlier, but I asked that you read it. I was, I was quite, I was quite amazed that Dennis was making my argument with regard to the new position that you discussed on the board tonight at the last meeting. I could have been sitting over there making that argument myself. And whether we like it or not, the folks of this town want to approve those things, okay? So, I know we want to repurpose and we want to, let's, we shouldn't say it this way, we should say it that, well, that just creates mistrust in town, right? Because guys like me will go talk about it, right? They're saying one thing, but trying to present something else. I mean, Obama's in trouble for that, right? Let's just tell it what it is. We have a new position. Dr. Cochran believes in it 100%. He showed us why. Let's ask people in town to support that. That was one hell of an argument. Why would we be afraid to do what people have asked us, put it on a warrant article, and let's approve the damn thing, so nobody's screaming from either side? Because people will buy that, because that was one hell of an argument, you know? Instead of causing guys like me to go scream that we're doing it wrong. Because that's where the argument then lies, right? Is we're doing it wrong. Instead of, Dr. Cochran's argument is, "This is why we need it." Have faith in people of town. Tell us what you need, we'll support it. Don't just sneak it, right? Thanks.
Rated eight minutes?
Uh-huh.
Rated eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Where is that leaving us? We're done.
Non-public?
Hold on, I gotta go back to my thing.
With that, we get a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91A-311 for, A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against them unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a meeting, and, two, requests the meeting be open, in which case, requests shall be granted. B, the hiring of any such person as a public employee. C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person, other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Hold on a minute.
Second.
Brian? Yes?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It was fantastic.
Let's spend it all in one place now.
That is tough.
Yes.
Yes.